Foxborough Planning Board Meeting will come to order. And I think we should just go right to the planner.
Okay. I don't have a written report, but I have a few brief updates. Much of our time past week or so has been on the 119 Moore Street project that we'll hear about later today, so stay tuned on that. We've been supporting the Board of Selectmen on that. There is a meeting next Tuesday night of the Board of Selectmen on the subject, so I'm sure they'll be watching tonight to see how things go with the Planning Board. They did ask that the Planning Board see this project since they feel that the Planning Board has more experience in looking at these types of projects than the Selectmen. But we'll get into that later. We've been working -- oh, one thing I should mention that I didn't write down is John Rhodes has wanted to step down from associate member for a while, so we do have an applicant. And just to be fair, we should let folks know that there is an opening. And I think we're going to keep it open until the end of the month, and then the Board will be looking at applications. But we do have one already, so that's good. We're working on the Local Rapid Recovery Grant. That's the one that the state was offering for Uptown. We're almost to the phase where we get into the fun part of figuring out what projects and how we're going to pay for them. They're starting to organize the funding mechanisms through some of the federal funds and state funds, so hopefully we'll have some exciting news coming up and some updates on where we're going with that. Some of it does involve parking uptown. You know, we're trying to incorporate some of our long-range uptown concerns with our recovery efforts, so looking at the Central Street parking lot. And then, as you know, every time we look at a project, folks kind of say, hey, how many times are you going to count those spaces within 500 feet? So I'm starting to look at the uptown as a district. That's one of the things I'm trying to get some funding towards. I think they're more interested in doing implementation than they are maybe studies, but you know, we're going to try to get some of this stuff so that we could -- because I think that is implementation in some ways of having a management plan to help us make sure we don't overcount or undercount parking spaces. So stay tuned for that. And also with another grant we've been working on, as you know, from the Mass Gaming Commission, that's our Regional Destination Marketing Plan. We finished that, and now we're getting -- we have a designer doing the website, and we have someone working on the content, again, all through grant funding. And we're getting to the point now where we're going to be seeing the final comp, as it's called, and start getting that close. And then we will also be filing under the tourism grant. I'm working with Rent Them right now to file under the tourism grant to see if we can get someone to do all this for us. Because it's -- one thing I've learned from the EDC website is it's way over my head. I am not a web designer, I'm not a content creator, and those that do it, that's a hard job. It looks easy, you know, when we all click on these buttons, how well everything goes. But I tell you, every time I log into that EDC website, I'm at risk of crashing the entire thing. So, you know, we're trying to think of creative ways, and fortunately, there's a lot of funding. And with folks doing a lot of domestic travel now is kind of the time to be supporting and creating opportunities for the region. I don't know about you guys, but if you've tried to make a hotel reservation or anything around these parts lately, it is insane. The people are just traveling locally, I think, way more than they ever have. So that's all I really have right now. Kind of busy.
Okay. And nothing under active subdivisions?
No. Not that we know of.
Okay. And minutes from July 22nd. Has anybody reviewed this?
Sorry, I sent them out this afternoon.
I haven't reviewed it.
I saw the email, but that was as far as I got.
Hold off on those until next time. All right. Well, we're running a little ahead of schedule here for public hearings.
There we are. What else can we talk about? Walnut Street. Can give you an update on Walnut Street. We have a draft RFP, and we now need to -- that's going to be a big push. I believe the Housing Authority wants to issue the RFP right after Labor Day, so we have to get that finalized. We have to work with the -- there's a procurement professional starting for the town, which is a major benefit. So we need help to get some standard contracts and whatnot done to incorporate into the RFP. So we're sort of into the logistic phase. We kind of have the RFP ready to go. We just have to do all the legalities that go with it. So that's underway. I think we're going to, as the EDC slash Uptown, we're talking about maybe doing some sort of promotional thing for Central Street. You know, there's a new barber shop. Jay Barrows business moved. The nutrition place -- so there's been talk about maybe later having like a ribbon cutting and some sort of celebration to try to draw people uptown, because that's what we continue to do. Oh, and other exciting news, we had Michael Bobbitt from the Mass Cultural Council. He's the executive director. He came out with Paul Feeney last Friday and visited the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center.
Sorry you guys were there.
Yeah, and it was a great visit, and he -- they were able -- they did such a great job, these community volunteers over there at the theater. They did such a great job showing the tour and showing all the amenities, putting together a package for him. So I think he really saw the benefit of having a community theater, and that sort of is the anchor of Uptown. Seeing Shovel Town under construction next door just showed. And then, you know, we had a great turnout from all sorts of -- from local officials and, you know, our state rep and our state senator. So it was a really great meeting. And in fact, on Monday, he emailed me and was like, definitely apply for the -- we're looking at working with the Cultural Commission here in Foxborough to create a cultural district. That's kind of the next step now that we're progressing things along uptown with wayfinding and our FCBC and some of the events that are occurring. If we create a district, then that opens up a whole new realm of funding and opportunities. So we're going to probably pursue that. We did -- I did meet with the Cultural Commission, and the FCBC is interested in working alongside. So we're going to be putting something together. Right now, it's tough, the end of summer, to pull anything together, but I would imagine come September, it'll be in full swing to get that.
So would that like encompass like the Boyd Library in that cultural district?
Yes. Yes. And one of the things sort of tied into the Mass Gaming Commissional Regional Destination Marketing Plan is that, like, for right now, if you think about it, we're trying to draw folks uptown. But today, there's not really a whole lot to do uptown. You know, if you went up there, you kind of could buzz through it. And so one of the things as part of a cultural district is you can also create amenities, whether, you know, some communities have done historical-type markers around where you'd have a walking tour. Others will have more of a, you know, where they decorate. In Franklin, it's ladybugs, and you can find them. It could be almost a search-and-find, and then they could have an auction. That's more of a fundraising thing. I think in Foxborough, we kind of need more of a thing-to-do. So I think it'll be kind of coming up with some ideas to sort of have, whether it's for children or for others, to sort of have the ability to go uptown and see all the amenities we have. When you think of Memorial Hall and the Steamer Shed and, you know, the theater and the library and all the -- I mean, the Doolittle Home, we really -- Schneider, you really could create quite a district.
Mackenzie Anderson did a -- it's the equivalent to the Eagle Scout and Girl Scouts, Gold Star maybe. She did something related to a walking tour of Foxborough where there was QR codes and you could, you know, read about it, so we may want to.
Can you ask her to dig that out, maybe, and see what she did? That'd be neat. And be kind of cool to have a local connection. We've also been -- we're definitely going to get a mural at some point. I mean, we don't have a full plan of where and how, but we're pretty committed to finding a way to get a mural going, so somewhere. So stay tuned. There's a lot of discussion. The Cultural Commission is very interested in working, and I think that, you know, the uptown businesses are starting to get a little bit of, you know, action. So let's -- we're going to be working on sort of coming hand-in-hand with Shovel Town opening up next year. You know, we're going to start to see, you know, more and more people visiting uptown and kind of staying around. And, you know, we're also, as part of the Local Rapid Recovery, looking at one of the master plan items that talked about the biking at the nearby State Forest, how to draw them uptown. So we're -- these are all sort of things we're pulling from to try to tie them in, to bring more people to visit, you know, our restaurants and to walk around. And, you know, that's how, you know, folks always want a bakery, or they want an ice cream shop or a candy shop, and, you know, that's market-driven. So until someone feels like they can open one of those businesses and have sufficient clientele to make money, it's just not going to happen. But if they start seeing folks visiting and there's a little bit of energy uptown, then maybe we will start seeing some of those businesses open up.
I'm sure once Shovel Town does the biking route map, it'll draw a lot of clients. Speaking of biking, any movement at all on your bike path?
We didn't get the grant.
Oh, you didn't get the grant?
No. No, we did not get the grant. And which is so lame, because it was only like $30,000 for the feasibility study. So back to the drawing board on how to do that. So that was disappointing. Obviously, it was a tremendous demand, competition. And obviously, I do take it personally and feel like we should get every grant, but that's not the way it works, so.
What's the status of the shake? Shake smoothie place?
Yeah.
Good question.
I think they're just in a little bit of construction delays. I'm not 100% sure.
That's what I heard.
Is that what you heard as well?
The same contractor who did George's, the new barber shop, he was two months behind.
Right. So I think, I don't know if he left out of that, didn't wind up doing the project or what, maybe he had to find us another.
Oh, I don't know.
Different contractor or something.
Yeah, I know everybody anxiously awaits that to open.
Any more word on what's going on with House Pizza?
They cannot open upstairs without handicap accessibility.
Well, they had permits, but they didn't -- we told them that it had to be handicapped accessible when we approved.
Yes, exactly.
And they did the renovations with permit, but they never did handicap. They rebuilt the stairway, but that doesn't work.
You mean where the House Pizza's today?
Yes, upstairs.
Yes.
There was a loft there that they converted into what was supposed to be.
Yeah, it's got to have an elevator, so.
Yeah, it's disappointing, but it's been the rule since get-go, and, you know, I think it was.
What's happening with those other two issued places? I know Coacet Street was resolved. We talked about how nice it looks, but.
Oh, no.
A net?
It's not -- that's not resolved. There's been a.
It's not.
Oh, I know, but Coacet was resolved, the oil man.
No.
No. It's unresolved now.
Alan's always taking it to further steps.
It's going in front of the zoning board. Is it going in front of the zoning board?
The oil man, next Thursday.
Okay, and what's happening with the net? Is it a net?
A net, yeah, I'm not sure on that. I haven't heard any updates. They have to come to us. Bill, have you gotten any for a net? Has you been contacted by that developer to talk about the fact that apparently they can't put the landscaping in behind the building because it's all ledge? And so they need to revise their site plan in order to get sign-off from the Planning Board? Have you been contacted at all on that?
They asked me to do an ASBIL, which we'll do once we actually finish. And then they asked us to do a detail for an elevator curb instead of a guardrail. So that's what I have.
Okay. Well, just for your edification, if you want to remind him, he also needs to deal with the landscaping. I mean, just, it needs to be addressed, because obviously, your ASBIL's not going to show it. And actually, our inspector, Gabby's on the line if she needs to jump in, but our inspector did corroborate that it's all ledge back there. And in order to actually do the planting they would have to do for screening, they would have to probably go near the already mature tree line, and then -- so he kind of -- I mean, Gabby, do you agree? Was Norm kind of saying it would be hard for us to do landscaping back there as intended because of the ledge?
Correct.
Oh, we can't hear you.
No, she did unmute herself. We can't hear you, Gabby.
Um.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, he did agree that because of the ledge, it would be very difficult to do the plantings. And the owner had said that they were going to submit, you know, revised plans or ASBIL plans with showing that. So I don't know where it stands right now. I guess I need to follow up a little stronger.
Maybe the Board would want to, you know, instruct us to encourage him to get this in in a September meeting. I mean, because it really is dragging out quite a bit.
Would you like me to reach out to him tomorrow?
Sure. But in the meantime, maybe we'll have Gabby, you know, send an official sort of email saying, let's not drag this out, just because it would be nice to tidy this one up.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. I think that's the end of my filibuster.
Well, it says 7:15 here.
Okay, it says 7:15 on Tracy's official phone. So it being approximately 7:15 PM, we have a public hearing. Site plan review for 1517 Market Street. Demolition of an existing house and construction of a municipal parking lot with 14 parking spaces. Town of Foxborough, Douglas A. King Builders Incorporated. Mr. Buckley?
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley. Excuse me, and I'm the engineer for the project. I'm representing the applicant, Douglas A. King Builders. So I think everybody's familiar with the site. I'm going to just put this up on my -- I'm going to share the screen and see what's drawing it. That's the correct drawing. So, and I know you have the reduced plan. So this is the second sheet, which is the existing conditions plan. I think everybody knows where this is. This is Market Street, and to the left here, which isn't labeled, but it's Rock Hill Street. And over here, where I'm circling, that's the existing funeral home. So just as a recap, this was actually part of -- or part of the discussion we had with the reconstruction of the funeral home, with the redevelopment of the funeral home area and the fire station. And one of the mitigation items that Mr. King agreed to do at the time was to tear down this building and to build a parking lot, and then that would -- which would be owned by the town. At the time, this was owned by the Housing Authority, and if you look at the data on the plan, you can see this was done almost two years ago. And that's almost how long it took for the town and the Housing Authority to do the land swap. So it is now owned by the town of Foxborough, and we've moved forward with this. So what this is, is it's an existing duplex dwelling. It's going to be torn down. It's in very difficult shape. It can't be salvaged. And it will be replaced with a 14-car parking lot, which I'm going to go to the next page. And I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit. You can kind of see. I apologize, I don't have my color drawings. It was a mix-up in our office, but the -- so this is the plan. This shows the -- you can see the house in the background, and you can see the parking spaces. You come in, 24-foot parking driveway, which is standard. There's seven spaces on either side. This is in the general business district, and it's being permitted under site plan. It's not a special permit under the Foxborough Center Downtown. So under site plan rules and regulations in the town, this would be allowed by right on the Table 31, Section I-3, which we looked at at the time, Paige and me, and it was Nick Riccio, trying to figure out, hey, is this allowed? Because usually parking lots, you know, need to go with something. And this is, because this would be considered a, I think it's termed something like an essential municipal use. So it is allowed by right in that area. Because it's in this area, this downtown area, under site plan, which I know we talked about quite a bit, the fire station, there's no buffer zones. There's no buffer zones because there's no setbacks for buildings. But we've managed to maintain on this lot almost 15 feet on the left side, as you look at it from the street, 10 feet on the right side, and about seven feet on the front. And that's good, because again, if you look at this, you can see on the left side, there's, you know, four trees there that range in size from six-inch to 15-inch on the property that we want to retain and maintain, so it doesn't look like a sea of asphalt from the funeral home to here. So we'll be able to retain that, and then the rest will be grass. In the back, we'll be able to retain some of the existing trees. And on the right side, those trees are off the property, but they'll remain too. So this will be nicely broken up. It's not going to be an opaque buffer zone, but it will break up the parking area. Be a standard parking area. The -- I'm going to go to the next page. It'll be -- it all pitches to the street. If you're familiar with it, you can look over there, and you can kind of see everything goes up towards School Street. So this will all pitch back, and we're going to pitch it over to the left front corner as you look at it from the street. Be one catch base in there. We'll put an underground drain system in there, very similar to what is being done at the fire station/funeral home project. And there will be overflow down out into the street. We'll be actually building a drain system out in the street again, similar to the fire station. And actually, on the other end of the street, we're building some drains there. So the town is basically getting drains built on Market Street as part of these three projects.
There is street drainage there, isn't there?
At the corners, at the corner of Rock Hill and Market, there is. And at the corner of South and Market, there is. Otherwise, there's no drainage on the street. Isn't that amazing?
Is that why you're disposing on-site?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons. Well, we have to retain -- we can't put more off-site than is currently going there. So we have to do, always have to do some type of infiltration or retainage. And in this particular case, we'll be going out into Market Street with an overflow in order to balance the flows. There's no lighting on this. There is a light over here in this, right here. There's a street light there, or I'm kind of circling, which is in front of Judy's parking lot. We didn't put any lights on it, just didn't think it was in character for the area. There seems to be plenty of lighting in that area at night.
Any liability from a town perspective?
I'm not sure.
I think we may want to just -- not that I don't believe you, but I think we want to confirm that. I'm the lighting person, you know. John Rhodes is the lighting.
Are those like solar lights that stick in, like the ballers or any of those pricey? You had those type of things?
Well, if what you -- it depends what you're looking for. If you're looking for.
I'm looking for safety.
Something to light, a path, you know, people coming out, you know, maybe one, one.
Shoebox?
One shoebox. That would probably be way more than adequate for this.
Can you just explain, Bill, the -- what you're envisioning? Because I don't really understand the transition from the paved area through the buffer into the Judy's parking lot.
There is none. There's nothing into Judy's. So right now, there's a connection.
I don't mean vehicular transition. I'm just talking about how you plan on handling that itself.
Sure. So let me go back to this sheet. So I'll zoom up a little bit again on it. So you can see the grades here over here on the left side. So Judy's is, in this area right here, it's 296, and then up top, it's 298, and as you go down here, it's about probably 295. So this is a relatively flat area. It's got about a three-foot rise and probably 100 feet. And you can see these heavy lines. This is the, what the finished grades are going to be. So we're pretty much matching what's there. You can see the slope through here. This is going to be 294. This is 296. So what we're trying to do is match the grades as we go up. And should be very little transition, flat, just grass. And that's how, one of the reasons why we can save the trees. If we were cutting or filling around them, it would kill them. So we're trying to maintain the existing grade through there.
Will there be curbing containing this lot? Will there be curbing separating on the Judy's side?
There'll be curbing containing this lot. It'll be bituminous curbing, all of it. Judy's side, I -- no. We're just going to, we're going to cut everything down, which with the property line, there's some paving. If you go into Judy's parking lot now, you can get into the back of this.
Sure.
There's an easement. You can see this heavy, this dashed line right here is an access easement that runs in favor of this parcel. So if we wanted to, we could put access through there, but I didn't want to do that because then I'm going to lose like two or three spaces. So I didn't want to lose spaces. We only had 14. And I just don't think it's necessary. And actually, it's good for Judy, because now they'll have more spaces along there as well, where before they had to leave it open. So it creates a couple of additional spaces on that parcel. So we're just going to put grass there on our property line.
Bill, what's that projection on the very rear end of this lot?
So what we do, we have to put a little bump out there, because it will allow people to turn around if they get a little bit messed up. And the grade back there is a little steep. So instead of doing a three-to-one slope, which is what we normally like to do, that'll be closer to a one-and-a-half-to-one. So we're just going to line it with stone. Ripper App will hold the stone. It'll hold the slope.
Is it going to be pretty? I mean, is it going to be ugly, I guess I should say?
I don't think so. I mean.
No, I know, I just like, I don't know what that looks like, but I was just thinking, is that going to be attractive?
Yeah, it's probably six-inch stone.
Oh, so it's flat? It's not, it's not, you're not?
Yeah, no, it's going up. It's going up two feet. So.
So two feet of what?
So it'll be, it'll be like a slope.
Yeah.
And then it will be lined with stone. You see them everywhere. I'm trying to think of a, the only one I can think of off the top of my head is, you go on one, you're coming up 95, go off 128, head toward Boston. Right there on the left, there's like, I think it's an envelope company or something. There's a, there's a huge slope there.
It's all six-inch minus?
Yeah, it's all stone. And I notice stuff like that, because that's the type of boring life I have.
Is that a, is that a, what's a, well, will weeds come through it? And like, is that like a long-term maintenance thing? I'm just trying to think. I would imagine that we're trying to do this somewhat, you know, economically.
Yeah.
And I just wonder, is there a treatment one step up that, you know, from the town's perspective, would we prefer, you know, if there's, we're working together on this? Like, I want to make sure that this is going to be an attractive amenity at uptown. I'm not trying to make it too crazy, but I just want to make sure this isn't ugly.
You don't want it to be an eyesore.
Yeah, or like something that a year from now will be overgrown, and you can't maintain it. I mean, I have no visual, so I can't imagine. I'm just trying to be protective of our pretty little uptown that's developing.
If you paved it, somebody would try to park on it.
I could put a little wall there. How about a little wall?
That might be.
And then on top of that will just be grass.
Yeah.
So you'll have a wall that'd be maybe two feet high, instead of a slope.
Although the people that hit the wall might rather have the rocks when they're backing up.
Make up your mind.
No, I just thought of that. I'm like, I like the wall better, but I don't want to be the one that now dings up all the cars.
People should drive safely. I think the wall would look nicer.
Yeah, I think the wall will look lovely, but I just, someone's going to bump it with their curve.
It'll probably be me.
They'll be so mad.
All right, so we'll call it right now, we'll call it for, you know, just a regular stone wall, like a natural stone wall.
Yeah, nothing too crazy, just something that'd be nice.
It's fine.
A little signage. We need signage there for the town? Limited parking, no all-day parking.
I think we can probably handle that. We could specify what we want, but we do have a sign fund for our wayfinding, and I think we probably are going to want it to look like our wayfinding signs using that color scheme. So I think we should talk about what we want there, and then maybe we have the town do that, just because we do have a special -- and these are through donations, by the way, of these wayfinding sound funds.
Because, I mean, we don't want people to consider that an extension of their driveway.
Correct.
And that, you know, it's, it's public parking, but there's a courteousness to it.
Just south of us. We don't want all-day employees parking. Now, there's a letter, for the record, that I'm going to read from a neighbor that talks about that.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to say, I'm sure there's going to need to be a policy. I mean, it is a, I have a feeling it's the selectmen who make policies about, you know, parking requirements, but I'm sure the planning board could offer some input on that. It might be something we do need to look at, you know, if we're going to have residential right next to that parking spot, you know, you certainly wants, wouldn't want someone with a second car basically occupying that parking lot as if it's a second lot. So we have to do, you know, manage some of that. As we get more successful, we'll have to deal with different issues.
Just a long-term parking.
Right. So, but again, that might be selectmen, but I do think if we have ideas, we should certainly make recommendations.
Anybody else have questions in the board?
So let me just go through a couple pieces of correspondence here before we open it up to the audience. This comes from Robert and Linda Shay, 20 Market Street. Dear Chairman, Wyfford, and Planning Board members, as a butter is located across from proposed parking lot of 1517 Market Street, we would like to express to the members of the Planning Board some of our thoughts for the board's consideration regarding the design. Most importantly, we're very supportive of this project and look forward to seeing the longcoming addition to the revitalization of our town center. Residing at 20 Market Street for the past 43 years, we consider ourselves part of the town center community. It seems that the prototype parking design for a satellite lot is located right at Town Hall, municipal parking, that is clearly marked by signage with landscaping, landscaped border, appropriate pole lighting designed to enhance the uptown location and appearance well-maintained by the Highway Department. Although much smaller in scale, the Market Street parking lot would require the same attention to design detail and continued care. As it is only 14 spaces, we would encourage the board to consider limiting the lot to three- or four-hour parking, no commercial vehicles, and no overnight parking. This will ensure that visitors to our town center will have an additional place to park while enjoying dinner, going to the new brew pub, visiting at the new apartment building, shopping, and attending events at the Marilyn Robbins Center and the Town Common. We respectfully submit these comments for your consideration as you review plans for approval. We look forward to the revitalization of our town center. Sincerely, Robert and Linda Shay, 20 Market Street. From town boards and officials, Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health, no objections here, I would recommend that they remove all hazardous materials and bait for rodents if needed before demo of the structure. Also drawing demo, they should use wetting techniques to mitigate nuisance dust. Fire department has no issues with the submitted application. Chief Grace has no concerns with the Police Department. Jane from the Concom says that since there are, there aren't any nearby wetland areas, they have no comments, and that's it. So with that being said-
Can I have?
Yeah, please.
One thing, which I kind of know the answer, but is, there is no way to fit any more parking spaces on this lot, is that correct?
What are you hoping for?
Well, no, I'm just making sure we're maximizing. You know, obviously, parking is a premium, and we have to balance aesthetics, but I just want, and I feel like I know the answer, but I just want to check in to see if there's a way, if there-
I mean, if you put two more at the very end, like, and got rid of that Turner pull-in area, you could, but those are tough spaces to pull into. So, I mean, if you want to-
No, no, I mean, I don't want to compromise, you know, so, but realistically, this is the best, highest and best design you would recommend. Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't leave anything on the table. And then the other thing is, is just something that will come up possibly later, just by mention, is the property that fronts on School Street there, the White House, the Bragg House there, that one is not tied into sewer right now. And they, my understanding is they cannot tie into sewer on School Street. So I'm suggesting to her that she submit a citizen petition for town meeting this fall to see about getting an easement to run through that parking lot before any of this gets done. Bill, is that, is that something you should look at, or we should, like, is that, is that going to be a problem? Okay.
As long as they lay the pipe before he's done his lot.
Right. Well, I just didn't know if there's any drainage or anything that would be in the way or whatever, so probably could manage that.
I don't think so at all.
I believe they were, they had applied years ago to do, to go onto, onto School Street, and I believe they were denied at that time.
Yeah, I think, I think I've heard they cannot tie in there. So we'd like to, you know, that property is an important property on the Common. It's challenged, given its small lot size already, but if it doesn't have sewer, then it really does limit the prospects in the future. So I think it's important that we make that available. So I'm hoping that she'll submit the citizen petition. She needs 100 signatures to do that. She's not local, so we'll see how that goes, but we are-
Does she, like, if this, if she doesn't do that, they do the thing, we won't, she won't be able to rip it up?
Right, well, I mean, she probably would have another town meeting, honestly, because this isn't going to be, Bill, when do you, I mean, this isn't going to be done until Doug King's done with construction, correct? So-
No, this has to be completed before he can get an occupancy permit for the 15 unit. So his plan is to tear this building down in the next 16 days, when he tears down the funeral home. And then he'll immediately go in and get it to grade, and then use it probably as a staging yard. And then next year, probably in the spring or summer, probably the summer, he'll start construction of it to have it ready and done, variety to the occupancy of the 15 unit.
Okay, so the timing is a little tighter.
It is. She's got one, maybe two, town meetings.
Yeah, so we'll have to, I did email her the other day about it, so hopefully she'll get on it. And it's just tough, because when it's a citizen petition, we really, we're limited in what we can do. I mean, I can't advise her on the legalities and the language, and I believe when you submit a citizen petition, the town can't amend it, you know, so if it's, it has to be done right. So, well, yeah, because it's like a citizen thing, so we can't really touch it.
So for a special, she needs 100.
Hundred, yeah.
For a May, tell me, she don't need 10?
Yeah.
And that property abuts, it's inconclusive from this plan.
It does abut, yeah, it's the-
See that garage? See the garage? That's, that's theirs, too.
Theirs, the very back of them.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all. I think, I think it'll work out. I mean, I've spoken to Bethany numerous times, so I think she'll get on it. They know it's important, so I think this will work out. But just a heads up, I wanted to make sure everybody knew about that possibility, and there were no hangups on that.
Okay, good.
So is there anybody in the audience who's here for this particular public hearing? Have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion to accept the site plan review for 15-17 Market Street as submitted.
With the changes that, with the wall in the back?
With the changes-
Did you want to-
Amended per our discussion.
So with the wall, do we want to mention-
The lighting.
Lighting, if required, for liability? And then-
Just from a safety-
And some type of, to petition the selectmen for limitation on hours of parking?
Parking. And then I think we will, if we do do lighting, I think I would like to talk to, like, kind of what Linda Shay mentioned in there, is, you know, maybe there's a way the town can work with. We're getting a new lighting thing done up at the Common. Maybe we could get one of the poles, I'm totally making this up as I say this, but one of the poles out there.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And, you know, maybe it could complement and tie in nicely, so-
I think it's a good idea.
Maybe we could work on something like that. But again, we don't want to light up the neighborhood, so we have to, we have to balance that, because we don't want to change the character of the residential portion of that street.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Good luck trapping the animals in there.
It being 7:25 PM or slightly later, we have zoning discussion with Barney Overton and Paige Duncan, continue discussion of special town meeting zoning articles for outdoor dining, daycare, habitable floor area, building height, and accessory dwelling units. Mr. Overton is here via Zoom.
He's been let out of the doghouse.
Hey, Barney.
Good evening.
Welcome, thank you, Barney.
So we, Barney and I are here just to, our understanding is that the Board of Selectmen will be opening, well, establishing and opening a warrant for the special town meeting on November 15th. I believe that's happening at their meeting next week, and the warrant will be open September 1st through September 15th. So we all know these things move quite quickly. At last meeting, I think I gave you a list of items we were considering, and so Barney and I have been talking a little bit more, and we're still somewhat in the early stages. You see my little list there, I mean, outdoor dining provisions, we're not ready to talk about that yet, really. But some of this other stuff has been progressed, so we figured while, rather than waiting all for one night, kind of keep things going. So I think, Barney, if you want to start off by talking about the accessory apartment bylaw?
Sure. So, the accessory apartment bylaw is one that we discussed a little bit more than a year ago. And as I recall, Ron had requested that I make a change to the provision that dealt with the square footage that would be permitted for the, you know, for the accessory units. So assuming that I sent the correct copy to Paige, and I assume that everybody has a copy of the proposal, I modified what would be item number eight to hopefully address the question and the issues that Ron had raised. Other than that, what you have in front of you is exactly the same as what we discussed, I think it was in February or January of 2020.
And Barney, I did attach the frequently asked questions to the back of the Planning Board's package, so just for your, for you guys to know that, that we do have a Q and A that's in the back, kind of covers all the stuff we talked about previously.
Is this, didn't we have a discussion about whether we were going to consider changing accessory apartments to not require them to be family members?
It's in here.
Is that in here as well, besides the size? Okay.
So this one's still, you know, through the whole conversation on housing, there's been a lot of ideas kicked around, and accessory apartments is one of them. This iteration does, would allow non-related folks to rent it, but it does not contemplate a detached unit, correct, Barney? So this, so that would be the more aggressive way, is where you could actually end up with a, you know, a little cottage in the back. That's not what we're proposing here.
But it has to be attached.
This would have to be attached.
Right.
Yeah.
But I do, I do have a question about what you just said, and that is, you said, would allow people to rent it. And that, you know, so in the original iteration, you know, the type of bylaw it was, was controversial in the day, even just allowing family members to be able to live there. And that's how it became as restrictive as it was with the size and how it was built and, and all of that stuff. So my concern here is that, are we, could we possibly be opening up a can of worms by saying, okay, you can live in either side, the owners could live in the, in the, in the smaller unit if they wanted to, and allow non-family members to live in the bigger unit, et cetera? But why are we opening this up in the R40 district to allow rental? That was a big concern back in the day, and I'm not sure that you'll get a positive response at a town meeting if you're going to say, yes, you can do this, and you can build it to a different size, et cetera, et cetera, and you'll be allowed to rent it.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, and we've heard that from you guys before. Things have changed since back in the day. You know, land prices in Foxborough are such that a lot is now $300,000. In order to, a developer to come in and build on that lot, they're pretty much going to want to sell that house for $900,000. That's what the R40 zoning district gets you today. It gets you almost $1 million, probably minimum $750,000 if you're lucky. So we have heard, you know, I've lived and breathed this for a couple of years, you know, we've heard from the residents, and we've heard from the seniors, you know, this, this may not be a bunch of transients coming in, you know, to do it. This might be some of our seniors that can sell their big home and go live, you know, in a nice little, you know, room behind wherever, at your house, you know? And the benefit to this is that there's always going to be, the homeowner always has to be on the property. So, you know, they're not going to want to do anything that detracts from their property value, and they're not going to want to create a nuisance for themselves. So it really is naturally controlling in that regard. And honestly, when, and what, I think it's in the Q and A, and if it isn't, I remember seeing it in the housing plan, is banks don't really want to finance these in-law apartments when they're so restrictive, because the problem is, is when, you know, a family member passes on and you have to remove the kitchen, and it's no longer an in-law apartment, it's really not really an asset to that property anymore. So a bank's not going to necessarily let you get a loan to do that. Whereas now, this is something that's going to improve the value of these properties. It is managed by the homeowner, and it will make it more, you know, more financeable for that. And it does, you know, we have a housing crisis in this country, but particularly in this region, and it will help some of these people, we call it a side hustle, but you know, if they're collecting a thousand, well, not even a thousand, that's ridiculous, you know, $1,200 or whatever in rent, it might help them afford that home.
I'm not saying, I have, I personally have an axe to grind about this. I just know that I've heard from people, you know, in the community in the past, and some are not in that, which of the recent past, saying, hey, I moved to R40 because I wanted it to be single-family, blah, 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 and I didn't want rentals across the street from me, or, you know, or in my neighborhood, or whatever, and we just have to be prepared for that. I'm not suggesting we shouldn't submit this. I just want us to kind of walk in with our eyes open about what-
And again, I don't think it's a rental. They have to, they have to blend into the house. They can't look like, you know, crazy.
Well, another thing is, the owner, it's not like it's two renters who don't have any skin in the game in the house. One of the two areas, the house or the side house, not attached, you know what I mean, has to own it. So it's not like, you know what I'm saying? There's somebody with skin in the game who's living on the property.
I think you'll be surprised at how few people actually do it. You know, I think there'll be many communities that have looked at this, they think there's going to be an overwhelming wave, but it's actually quite expensive. Some people don't want people living, you know, attached to them, and, you know, a lot of people in the R40 don't want that. So I don't think we'll see a major wave, but even if we get a handful, you know, it might move the dial a teeny bit for some of the folks that are struggling here.
Might see the ones that are already there come up in the open.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
But I definitely advocate here.
It's a tough road because-
Cannot convert a detached garage. Says that plainly, right? Now, if you had a detached garage 30 feet away, could I attach it with a common porch? A breezeway, a patio?
Has to be enclosed.
A breezeway.
Breezeway is-
Well, I don't know, breezeway wouldn't be considered enclosed, I don't think.
Yeah, remember, the last one we did, we didn't-
Breezeway can be totally enclosed, it's-
Well, the last one-
I want to talk about that, too.
Yeah.
I thought I saw some language in here from Barney that said it had, it had to be, well-
Contiguous?
Yeah, contiguous, but also that it couldn't be open in some fashion, like screened in. It had to be-
My grandmother's breezeway is totally enclosed.
Yeah, totally enclosed.
The common wall or flooring ceiling, so separated.
It's not very breezy.
To sort of answer Gary's question, the Board of Appeals actually approved the construction of a, you know, for want of a better term, a breezeway, but it was completely enclosed and winterized to attach a garage to a house.
Okay.
And allow that to be a two-family home. That was in the R15 district, it was in the, was not in the R40. But the applicant initially wanted to, to convert the garage into a separate home, and therefore have two separate homes on the, on the lot, which we would not, you know, we would not obviously approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin?
One, one other thing to bear in mind is that accessory dwelling units, zoning bylaw provisions or amendments or what have you relative to accessory dwelling units no longer require two-thirds vote at town meeting. It's just a majority vote. So-
Good to know.
Some of the, you know, some of the concerns that Kevin expressed about opening up a can of worms and responding to those kinds of questions, you're not going to have the luxury of a two-thirds vote to, you know, to defend the position.
I'd just like to talk a little bit about that last application that we had.
Can we let, Barney's probably not familiar with that.
I'm sure he's not.
Okay.
And so I-
All right, go ahead.
And even I'm a little bit, already my memory's a little bit gone, but my recollection is, I'm not sure whether you're in on this or not, Kevin, but I'm sure Paige is-
Yeah, it wasn't all connected.
It was, it was an application, it was Pace and Road.
Yep.
It was Edelman's old house.
It was Edelman's old house, and it was, they, there was like a room, a common room, and then their other room. It wasn't continual.
So Barney, actually, I'd love for you to get together maybe with Paige, just to kind of offline to discuss this, and just get your thoughts on it, whether it would be addressed in some way, this type of application, because my recollection was, yeah, the, there was an addition to the existing structure, and that addition was largely to be occupied as the second unit, if you could put it that way. But it, it also was connected to other living space in the existing structure through the space that was supposed to be occupied by the other party.
Right, I think the bottom line is, is like, the kitchen and living room was on one side of a common area, and then the bedroom for this unit was on the other side of the common area. So it was like, you basically, the person living in that, and that was clearly a family dwelling unit, not a stranger dwelling unit, because the person living in that second unit was going to have to cut through the family room for, for the whole house to get to their, their common space, their own space.
So my, and I'm not asking for an opinion now or anything, but perhaps, you know, Paige could give you that application, you could just kind of let it percolate a little bit, because I was a little funked out about it, you know, when it came before us. So I just-
Do you think they backed out of the deal?
Oh, they backed out?
You know, I have no idea whether there will be more of those types of applications or not, but it was, it was something that was a little bit of a concern, you know?
But again, on that one, I just want to remind you, Jeff, that's a special permit, so the planning board holds the ultimate control on that. And the board ultimately determined that it was really the inconvenience to the homeowner that was going to be the problem there. If anything, it keeps from renting to a stranger because you have to walk through the common area. But in that instance, it was increasing the value of the property, increasing housing opportunity for someone, and it really wasn't affecting, it wasn't affecting the exterior appearance. So I think you guys decided as a group that, from a special permit perspective, there was really no harm. But I know you, you expressed concern with that, but in a way, it's like, it really didn't hurt anybody by having that flexibility. It's like, and again, recognizing the housing crisis we're in, you know, giving an opportunity for a family member to live in that home and have some personal space, I think the board opted to go that route.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all on board with the overall concept of what we're trying to do here, but I am a little taken back by the rental portion of it. I'm not a big fan of having, now in my case, it's literally impossible to do, but in most neighborhoods, if I was in an R40 district and I had a house that was 800 to a million, and my next-door neighbor decided they were going to do the accessory apartment and then rent it out to whomever, I think I'd have an issue with that.
You probably wouldn't even know.
Okay.
No, I mean, I mean, really, like, they have to design it in a way, I mean, if you're a million-dollar house, I mean, I don't, you know, it's going to be an addition that hopefully you'd never know, like, you'd see it, it would blend in. And then, I mean, I just don't think it's going to like.
I don't think, I don't think five in-law apartments in my neighborhood, four, five in-laws?
In-law, yes. We're taking the language of in-law out and we're putting rental.
Okay, so what is.
I'm not on board yet.
But if it's not rental, what is it?
What, it's, it's, it's in-law, it's family versus renting to a stranger. So what's the concern?
Renting to a stranger. You have zero control.
But the person lives there.
Not concerned about the quality of the people moving in, is what you're.
Exactly.
But you're vet, I mean, your homeowner, you're vet, you have to live next to them. They're coming into your home, you know, and you're, you're not going to.
That's kind of like if I sell that, the house next door is to me sells, they could sell it to.
Or they could rent it to anybody they want.
No, I, I agree.
And they'd be my neighbor, I have no control over that.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not there with it yet.
Okay.
I understand what Ron's saying, because you're going to have somebody that, the money's more important than anything else.
Yeah, but it's my, I mean, I could move out of my house tomorrow and rent it to anybody, and my neighbors have no, my neighbors have no say over that.
True. But anyone that could afford your house is not going to be a deadbeat.
Well, and I, okay, so I.
You wouldn't think.
If I put an in-law, would I rent it to a deadbeat?
It'd be a.
Would I want a deadbeat living, attached to my house?
Well, in order to speak intelligently, I really need to sit down and weigh through this thing.
They're offering $200 a month or whatever.
All right, so that's accessory apartments.
How exciting.
I know, you know, Jeff's not ready to, you know, I mean, it's not time, we're not asking for a vote.
Just, just can I ask one more question about this?
Oh, yeah, of course.
So on page three of the descriptive area, there, you talk, there's talk about affordable accessory units and the owner of the house being required to live in the main structure as opposed to the affordable side, and, and you're talking about deed at riders to restrict for a period of not less than 15 years, et cetera, et cetera. So just as long as, if that were to pass at a town meeting, just that anyone who does this has to be truly well-informed so they understand the cumbersomeness of what it is if they decide to go affordable, you know, what, not so much for what they're getting into, but just that they understand the full complexity of that, as opposed to someone who's trying to do a market-rede apartment, like you said, you know, whatever, $1,200, $1,500 a month, whatever they can get, so.
Yeah, no, I agree, and I, you know, I would be surprised to see any, or, you know, anybody really probably going for that route, but maybe they would, you know? I think, again, Barney's been in on the conversation on housing, and that's kind of where this might not last, we don't know, but it's something, you know, we're trying to find a way to solve some of this affordable housing. You know, you're going to see in the memo later on Moore Street, I mean, almost 500 of our 878 units are at the lodge in the domain.
Right.
So I mean, and the new census data is coming out soon, and I don't think, we're not going to go below 10%, but next time we might, you know? So it's like, to pick away at like, a couple units here and there is a lot smarter than getting suddenly behind 10% and ending up with 250 units. So we want to just make sure we're, you know, logically working on some of this. But again, I don't think that folks will be beaten down the door to do affordable accessory units. Barney, do you think they will be?
No, I don't think so, but by the same token, you know, because it's become an issue, if they're even two or three over time, it's two or three more than we, than we have now. So I think that as long as people realize what the obligations and requirements are and are willing to go in that direction, it's, it's worth having.
Okay.
That was a spirited.
It was a good conversation.
All right, what's next, Paige? Which one do you want to go to?
All right, what's next? I think we're on to, oh, that was me, site plan waiver for Fcod uses. I'm not really ready with anything, I don't know if I handed anything out on that, but I'm working on a draft that would allow, oh yeah, there it is. Yeah, I don't, I can't find mine. But Barney hasn't vetted it yet because he's been pretty busy, so I'm going to, he'll take a look at that, but that was my first stab at, basically, the reason, reasoning being is like Foxborough Nutrition, they weren't changing anything, parking or anything on their site, and yet, why do they have to come to us for a rubber stamp of a waiver? So we'd rather have some language in there that formalizes the waiver process for those sites that are not changing anything on the exterior. So, I'll work with Barney on that if he doesn't mind.
Cool.
Sure.
Poor Barney. Then we get on to building height and stories, and Barney?
Why don't you, why don't you tee it up? Because it initially came from.
It did, you're right.
From your request.
Okay, so this has come up because we've figured out, and you've heard this before, but just for anybody watching at home, the way we, we talk about height in the zoning bylaw, both in stories and in number of feet. And so the stories is what's running us into trouble because our zoning bylaw limits stories to 2.5, and yet, it also defines a basement as a story. So like, for example, these single-family homes that have two floors and a basement, technically they're out of compliance. So that caused us to start looking, and we've been running into a little trouble, you know, uptown, it's like, what's a story, what's a feet? We started doing some research, I think Barney looked around and at other communities, and we're finding that many communities are abandoning the stories and just using feet. Because that's kind of, I know the town, when Bill Caspero was here previously, had done a really good job coming up with a building height definition, so we have a real firm handle on building height, so let's deal with height. Stories are, could be 10 feet in height, they could be probably 15 feet in height, I mean, we don't know necessarily what a story's always going to be, so Barney, how's that for a tee-up?
Yeah, that's good. So what I'd done here, I went through the zoning bylaw to look at every location where we use the word story, and essentially to delete that reference and either change it to feet or just keep the, the reference to feet. The ones that I missed, Diana picked up a bunch that I had missed, and then Gabby picked up a bunch that Diana and I had missed. So really what you have here is a list of sections that would need to be, that would need to be amended to, to delete references to story or stories and just utilize references to, to feet to determine building height. To my mind, this works from, from my perspective on the, on the Board of Appeals. I, I think the thing that has to be answered is whether it works from your perspective on the planning board. And I would also be interested in any comments that the, the building commissioner might have, you know, relative to the issue. I had a very brief conversation with him about this months ago, but that wasn't in the context of, here's something that I drafted, what do you think? And, and I did send him a copy of this over the weekend, only to find out that he's on vacation this week, so I've not had an opportunity to talk with him. But, but again, I think this works, as I said, from a zoning board standpoint. The other question is, does it work from your perspective, from the building commissioner's perspective?
Is there any downside to this?
No, I think it absolutely does, Barney. Barney, and you know, we've had situations just in the past year.
We've had multiple situations.
Yeah, no, I, I don't see anything bad about this.
Right.
So I think what we'll do is, you know, let Barney have, not Barney, Barry have a chance to look at it. He, he's pretty swamped right now, he's on vacation, and I know next week's going to be crazy for him, so we'll give him a chance to catch his breath, but try to bring him up to speed on this, but I think we might want to continue moving forward with it. All right, Barney, you've got childcare and habitable floor?
Yeah, so the next two items, the proposal relative to childcare definitions and the proposal relative to a habitable floor area definition, arise out of a, an application that the board had in June, in which the applicant was requesting authorization to run a childcare or daycare facility in, in her home. And, and we ended up approving the application, but there were some questions from, well, in one case from somebody in your, in your, in your building right now, as well as a member of the zoning board, as to our authorization or our ability to, number one, even consider the application, and number two, what, what do the terms actually mean that we're dealing with? The state recognizes essentially two childcare programs. One would be in a facility that's outside the home, it could be in a church, it could be in a synagogue, it could be in a school building, it could be in a standalone building, and that is deemed a childcare center under state statutes. Secondly, they, they recognize daycare programs that are within the home, and there are two separate categories for that. One would be daycare programs for six children or under, and the second would be daycare programs for more than six children, but not exceeding 10. So the question that arose was, why don't we actually define these terms in the, in the bylaw? Essentially, what the bylaw does is, is references the state statute. In other words, you know, again, the first definition you see here is childcare center. In the bylaw, childcare center is defined as a facility defined by Mass General Law's Chapter 15D, Section 1A. So one of my fellow members on the zoning board requested and suggested that I put together definitions of the specific terms, that's what you have in front of you. These definitions essentially track what is in the state statute. I made some minor changes to fit with the bylaw, but essentially it's the same as what you have in the state statute. I can think of four or five reasons why we don't need to make this change, and three reasons why it would be appropriate to do so. From a personal standpoint, I'm kind of lukewarm on the issue. I'm not sure that we definitely need to, to make the change, but inasmuch as one of my board members has requested it, and I like to support the issues and concerns and suggestions of my board members, I would advocate for it in that, in that regard. If you want me to go through why I think it's, it would, would be good and why I would think would not be necessary, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, maybe not all five or six.
Well, they're short, believe me, I trust me. So let me, let me start. So as to why not, number one, it's not ever been an issue or a concern in the past. Number two, we don't receive many childcare applications. In fact, the last one we had was three years ago, and this issue never, never arose at that point in time. Three, anybody who requests a special permit to operate a childcare program is going to know what the state statute requires. And if they don't, they shouldn't be before the Board of Appeals. Four, you know, referencing the state statutes as the definition permits us to change our requirements as the state changes its requirements. And five, there are multiple other references in the zoning bylaw to state statutes or regulations without any definition or any explanation as to what those, what those mean. As far as reasons to do it, it does provide clarity, you know, to the zoning bylaw. It allows us to determine whether or not to revise our zoning bylaw provisions if the state in fact does change its statute. And finally, our terms don't exactly match those that are in the state statute. The definition of, or the term childcare center is a match, but we use the terms family daycare large and family daycare small. The state statute uses the terms family childcare home and large family childcare home. So there's not an exact match between the terminology that we have in the bylaw and the terminology in the state statute.
Does that put us in any sort of risk?
Listen, I'm personally lukewarm on it, but I, you know, do want to support my fellow board member, but the decision again is yours.
Okay. Thank you.
That was helpful. I mean, with the, the reasons why we should, if we don't, is there, are we putting the town at any greater risk, Barney?
I don't think so. You know, it'd be nice if our terms, you know, matched exactly. In other words, if, if instead of using family daycare large, we used, you know, large, you know, the same term that the state uses. But again, it hasn't proven a problem in the past, I just don't see how, how it necessarily would prove a problem in the future.
How many?
I think my biggest concern, and I don't know, is just keeping track of it. I mean, one of the things I learned long ago is that when you specifically change something to match state law, then they change it, you know, then suddenly your zoning bylaw is obsolete, and you have to, that, you know, you go through the process of this and change it, but sometimes you don't notice. So then, it could be that in a year from now, the zoning board isn't even aware of it, and then they go to, you know, Barney goes to do his research, and, you know, it's a slightly different something. So that's the one risk I have.
I'm sure it's not like the Secretary of State is informing you of every, you know, regulatory change.
Right, I'm not sure we'd know. So I don't know, I mean, I defer to Barney on this, this is much more something he has to deal with, but I think that's my one risk of when you get real specific in a zoning bylaws, you're locked in until the town meeting is willing to vote it.
I also think that we need to be judicious. There's 10 things on this list, it sounds like this one would be dead last. And if that's the case, I would, I would punt this one.
Right.
I think there's way, we need to deal with the building height thing, there's things we've got, you know, the Fcod, the change for the not needing a special permit.
Yeah, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate and respect what Barney's saying about supporting his board member, but I think we've got to prioritize, and this just isn't up there.
And, and in that thing, the one that I definitely want is the proposed definition of habitable floor area.
All right.
This is an issue for us in two circumstances. One would be with home occupations, and the home occupation cannot exceed 40% of a home's habitable floor area. And the second would be with respect to extensions, alterations, or reconstructions of pre-existing non-conforming structures, residential structures. If the new area is to exceed 25% of the existing habitable floor area, the Board of Appeals is required to issue a special permit and a finding. So there is no definition in the bylaw of habitable floor area. It became an issue in the application that we dealt with in, in June. Based on questions to the applicant, we were able to determine that the area of the house that she wanted to utilize for the home occupation was in fact habitable. The closest we come to any definition or concept of the term is the fact that the assessor's office uses the term living area. However, that, to my mind, is not appropriate from a, from a zoning standpoint, in large part because areas of a home that, for whatever reason, the assessor's office does not deem to be living area are areas of a home that you and I would consider to be, to be habitable. Just by way of example, a, a finished basement would not be deemed to be living area by the assessor's office, but I think from a zoning standpoint, we would consider it to be, to be habitable. I live in a raised ranch, my downstairs is not considered to be, by the assessor's office, living area. And I can understand why the utility room and why the garage is not living area, but the, the den and the room that I'm sitting in right now, which is, for want of a better term, an office, a home office, you know, certainly is, is habitable. So I think that it would be appropriate to have a definition in the bylaw that establishes what the concept is, both for the purposes of the zoning board and for the purposes of the building commissioner, applicants, and, and a butters.
Very logical.
I agree.
Okay, that's great, Barney.
That was a very good description, thank you.
You guys good with that? You, that's a newbie, so.
Yeah.
You like that? Okay. Then the street acceptances, those are not zoning-related. I already mentioned the citizen petition for sewer easement. And then lastly, a new development is Wormtown. And Barney is on it a little bit, because he, I've been sort of consulting with him. We received a call, and Wormtown is interesting, interested in serving, well, brewing, or, well.
Distilling.
The word, distilling, thank you, distilling spirits to serve there. And so we've been, Barney and I have been looking at the zoning to figure out what mechanism by which they could achieve that. And Barney, I did print out your letter, and it's up in the copy here now that I think about it, but it's a little long for tonight anyway, but I think the gist of it is, we think it would be better served to have that addressed by a zoning amendment on the brewpub definition. And Barney, do you happen to have there your recommended, like, some sort of, I mean, I know you didn't write it out, but just, you mentioned the distilling of whatever and the wine you kind of mentioned?
Yeah, I think would be to add the fermentation of wine products and the distillation of other alcoholic beverages, add that to the definition.
Yes.
As being permissible ancillary uses.
Yes, so that's, right now, we're not, it doesn't, it's, you know, we think it could be slight stretch to allow it, but why not deal with it in a, you know, upfront manner? And Barney hasn't heard this, and so I might be out of line here, but again, back to what we were talking about, we've recommended that the Kraft Group or whomever, Wormtown, submit a citizen petition. But now that I've had more time to think about it, we have another brewery opening up in town, and I wonder from an economic development perspective, if this is something that maybe this board would want to just do is sponsor that, so that we can just change the definition of brewpub to include that, not necessarily for Wormtown alone, but for Shovel Town, and we are seeing it as an emerging industry in, you know, in the restaurant businesses, so, and it would always be ancillary. It's much like having a brewpub where you might distill a little bit, it's part of a restaurant, and it just allows them to take advantage of the farmer's poor licensing and, you know, distill on their property. I'd need to do a little research as to what that involves and whether Barney's comfortable with that, but I do think, you know, try, anything we can do to help some of these people out, like, I wish I could help the Bragg House out that would not have to get 100 signatures, I mean, that's kind of hard to do.
I mean, I'd be on board as far as it being an ancillary use, but if they're going to do distillery for production and distribution on large scale, no.
No.
Not in an environment like that. There's a restaurant right in Franklin right now, which is doing exactly what we're discussing.
Yeah, yeah.
So it'd be just doing just for service sales, what you're saying?
Well, you can buy a bottle there too.
Okay.
But it is, it's not being distributed.
It's not gonna be in liquor--
No.
Yeah, and that's not the goal. You're right. The, the operation there is really just to serve, you know, it's a side biz, another side hustle, shall we say? But it's part of the restaurant use. It's not part of a manufacturing operation.
And being able to buy small amounts there for, you know, take home personal consumption.
Yeah. I mean, are they allowed to do that in a brew pub already now, right?
Right, right. I'm saying--
The parallel, yes. So--
Yeah, what I, what I would suggest is that the second definition of, the second sentence in the definition of brew pub, you know, references the, um, types of ancillary uses that would be permissible. It's just to add wording in, in that section that would address, or revise that sentence by adding some wording to, uh, to address this kind of issue.
So is that something the planning board's comfortable with me looking into a little bit more to see? Because again, I think it'd benefit the community.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Jeff, you look pensive.
Well, I can only envision, you know, I think there's a, beyond the zoning aspect of this, there's, uh, also the aspect about what a community, uh, will reasonably swallow or tolerate, no pun intended. And I'm just wondering if that type of consideration or expansion of use might promote backlash against, you know, the concept of brew pubs in general, which, you know, I think we're, is even now, it's, you know, I don't, I wouldn't think that that issue, just because we have one here and through kind of like a, a, a very sensitive process, we got a, an outdoor one, you know, down the street for the summer. So I, I'm just letting that percolate a little bit.
I could see what you're saying. I do look at it as an economic development thing. I mean, you know, we've been working a lot through it. And I will say to, to Ron's point, go check out Glen Pharma is what it's called in, in Franklin. It's incredible.
Been there before.
Yeah, so it's incredible. So I think it is like, I look at it as emerging industry. I don't even look at it like as, I don't even know that you'd know that it was a different use, you know? I mean, you're not necessarily walking into a booze factory. It's, it's a restaurant, you know, with--
But you, but you, you know, you write it into the zoning and you, you've got it up, you know, uh, on route one and that's cool. But then you've got other, you know, locations and potential, potential applications that could come down in the future. I just got to think that through a little bit.
I don't know. Yeah, you guys--
I mean, it's going to be limited by floor space too, because a situation like the fire station, I think might be a little bit more hard pressed to be able to get distillation in there. I don't know.
Well, I'm just asking, why would you think that though?
Well, because doing stills, mash pots and stills versus just fermentation pots or having both of the same, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have a limited floor space. So I don't think it's going to be overly abundant. Glen Pharma was a, was an industrial building.
It was.
There was, there's a lot of room in that place.
Yeah, that's huge. That was in Contra. For those that don't, that was in Contra and now it's, um, Glen Pharma. It's better, yeah. But, um, all right, well, in the, the interest of time, um, we'll, we'll look into it, not binding. We'll, um, just see where that goes and discuss it.
We're having conversations.
Um, I think that's it, right? Barney, I think you're off the hook.
Thanks, Barney.
I'm off the hook. Thank you very much.
That was great. Thank you, Barney.
As always, Barney is our MVP in zoning, so thank you.
Well--
And he doesn't like to be told that, so.
Yeah, we're gonna tell him anyways.
And Paige, great--
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, Barney.
Bye, Barney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige, as well.
Okay. So it being sometime past 7:45 PM, we have a definitive subdivision, one lot subdivision, Orchard Place, Mill Street Reserve Limited Partnership.
Shall I move my chair out of your way? Pushing me? Oh, okay. Tell that hand got damage.
Have one for me.
You have to shut, you have to shut the pruners off before you take the branch out of it.
It's freezing here.
It's like a party in the lobby.
I got my blanket here.
What's your place? Gentlemen, good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, before we begin, for anybody who's here that has not attended one of these before, just so you understand, we're going to give the applicants and these representatives an opportunity to present their plan and then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, um, regarding the presentation. And then after that, we will open it up to anybody in the audience or from the general public who has a question, a comment. All we ask is that, um, if we call on you to please, um, state your name and address for the record and are they gonna have to come up to a microphone, Paige?
Yes.
And do you have to come up to that microphone in order to make your comment or ask your question? So with that being said, let me remember when your team is going to start with this.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Bill Buckley, Bay Colony Group, and I'm here representing the applicant, Mill Street Preserve Limited Partnership. Um, with us also this evening is Jeff Lovely, who is the attorney for the project, and Joe Lynch, who's the principal of the, um, Mill Street Limited Partnership. So what we hear before you this evening is for the, um, application for a definitive plan for a parcel of land located on the end of Orchard Place. And what I'm just going to like to do is, again, I apologize for not having my colored drawings. Let me put up-- Share my screen.
Turn on.
I'm off.
Turn it on.
Oh, okay. All right.
Went to sleep when you left.
Okay, got it. It says I'm still on.
Gabby's overriding you.
She looks all sweet and innocent, but--
Still on the full screen though.
Uh, it says I'm still on and it shows my picture up there.
The video is muted.
Yeah?
I'll unmute you if I can.
No, I don't want, I, no, I don't want to unmute. I want to be muted and I just want to be able to share the screen.
You gotta, you gotta unmute your video.
No. If I unmute the video, then you get all this--
No, no, but see how the video is, is gonna extrude?
Has extrude.
See if you can turn your video on.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't matter, but okay.
Now we get you in person in there.
This is proof that engineers do not know everything.
Don't tell my kids.
That could be a very long discussion.
There you go.
All right, great. Good evening. So again, um, so what this is, is the, is the, it's an, it's an existing 0.7 acre parcel of land. It's located at the end of Orchard Place, which, um, is located on Main Street. And this is a parcel of land that was created back in March. It used to be part of the property or single parcel for 18 Baker Street. And it was, um, cut out from 18 Baker Street and now is solely owned by Mill Street Limited Partnership. It's in the R15 zoning district. It's not in any overlay, zoning overlay district. Um, and the project's going to involve the construction of about 175 feet of new roadway at the end of Orchard Place, which is a 25 foot wide private way that currently provides access to the property and also provides access, um, to a duplex dwelling at the end of the street on the left. So we've, um, had meetings with town officials, um, we've been before this board informally several times, and we've also met with the town's professional staff to, uh, discuss the project after we had filed it. And we've taken the comments that we received into it and taken the comments we've received into, um, reviews of the design. And the, and we've also had a review by the town's consultant, BSC Group, and we made some modifications to the drawings based on the comments we've received from BSC. There were some small comments that we received after the fact from the DPW concerning the water services and, um, you know, we will make those, um, changes in our next iteration. But what you see here is a roadway that has been designed in accordance with the subdivision regulations. It's 50 feet wide. It has 20 feet of pavement, um, where it, the new portion of it comes in off of Orchard Place. The cul-de-sac has a 42 foot wide radius, which meets the standard. The curbing is slope granite curb all the way around it. It has sidewalks on both sides. There is handicap accessibility at the sidewalk, at the entrance, the two entrances on the left and right as you come in off of Orchard Place. Um, the roadway we've put in, uh, contains street trees approximately every 50 feet around the outside of it, um, which again is a requirement of the bylaw. Um, the site's going to be serviced by municipal water, which again is a requirement of the bylaw. We've met with the, again, the DPW on that. It will not have a, um, a main. Um, it's going to have a two inch plastic service that comes up from, um, Main Street. And what we'll also be doing at that time is to tie in the duplex at the end there, I think it's six and eight. Um, we're going to take, tie their service into the new main, which was a, a request from the DPW. It will be serviced by underground electric. Right now, the electric poles come in on the right side as you come in on Main, so we'll go, uh, on the last one, we'll go underground and we'll come into the site and we'll reserve the new, um, house. We'll buy underground electric. There is a street light in the cul-de-sac, again, because of the regulations require such. We've done soil evaluations on the site in order to confirm that the site will support a, um, individual sewer disposal system. Again, part of the regulations, um, require us to do that, which we have done so. We'll be handling, handling stormwater through a standard, um, catch basin drain manhole system, and I'm just going to kind of show it here, um, circling it like in this area here, if you can see it. That was kind of, so this area here. What this is, is, and I'll, I'll zoom up a little bit to make it an easier look. The, um, so the, the site goes up, as you can imagine, if you've been down there, you can see it. So the site goes up and actually hits a peak in approximately this area and starts to head back down. This is a, a high point between Baker Street and Main Street, but the, the road itself will continue to go up, so be a little bit of a fill at the end here. And then, so the runoff will pitch back toward it. There's two catch basins that will capture the runoff before it enters the existing Orchard Place, the private Orchard Place, and into this underground drain system, which is, um, similar to many systems you've seen. Actually, I just showed you one over on Market Street. It's just underground, uh, concrete galleys that will capture the runoff, infiltrate it into the ground and, um, no, it will cap, it will run, it will infiltrate every storm up to the 100-year storm, which is the highest storm that we have to manage under the, under the stormwater regulations. Again, we've done soil testing in that area. We've sent out lab samples and we've had some comments back, um, again, we've answered from BSC. The, um, the septic system will be down here over in this corner here approximately, you know, the house is approximately shown, the septic is approximately shown. We don't know exactly where they're going to be until they're actually designed, but again, we're required to show in a general manner, septic and driveways and house locations. So, um, it's our opinion that this design is in compliance with the subdivision regulations. We're not asking for any waivers. This was one of the things that was asked us, you asked us to do to come, you know, to prove that it was in, that we could build something in compliance with the regs. So I think I will, um, stop right there and open it up for any questions.
Bill, the biggest, the first question I've got is Orchard Place is 25 feet wide.
Yes.
In order to make this a viable street, it needs to be 50. Where are you getting the other 25?
So, um, it's our opinion that we don't need to make, we don't need to make it 50 feet wide. Um, there is access and we, what we call vital access, that the fire department has told us in their meetings, and I think there's some documentation between, um, between the board and the fire department, that an 18-foot wide paved road would be sufficient for them and they also wanted some tree trimming done as well. So what we're proposing is to, um, make Orchard Place, um, adequate to meet the vital access standard that is defined by the fire department. And then this portion here at the end is the portion under the, under the board's purview and that's the portion we think is in compliance. So we think, we think, we, we think we are in compliance and that we are allowed to use that as access.
But who owns that other, the additional footage that you're using to do your calculations?
Um, all of our roadway, the 50 foot wide is on our property.
It is.
Yes. All of it's on our property. The 25 on Orchard Place is the private section that goes out to Main.
Okay.
We're just popping onto the end of it.
All right. That was, that was my question. This will still remain private, a private road, private way and maintained by the developer or by the town at that point?
Well, you know, you know, in a perfect world, when you build a roadway to the town standard, we would normally expect it to be accepted.
To be accepted, correct.
Um, you know, it's really up to town meeting what they would, would do. So that would be town meeting's call if they were going to accept this as a, um, a public way.
Would you be reconstructing the entire length of Orchard Place?
So the entire length of Orchard's place, it's, it's really in tough shape now, so we would make it 18 feet wide. So that portion of it that is, um, paved, you know, kind of paved, is, uh, we would try and rehabilitate that. We'd mill it and see if we could, you know, use something that's there. If not, we would do a, a full depth reconstruction. It's not 18 foot wide as we sit here.
Right.
Um, so those, like the portion of it, in order to make it 18 foot wide, that would be just as if we are constructing a new road. You take out all the loam and topsoil, subsoil, put in eight inches of gravel, four inches of dense grated, four inches of paving, and then you overlay the whole thing once it's so done. So if you looked at it from Main Street, it's going to look like a new street, 18 feet wide as you go through. Some of it will be overlay, some of it's going to be new, new construction, new depth. What we call four depth reconstruction.
And that would be a concern of mine if it was going to be accepted as the town, by the town, is that the road was brought up to the current standards completely.
I would agree. I would agree. It is in very bad shape.
All right. Any other questions from board members at this time?
I, I don't think, I, I think I misunderstood your question. I, let me just restate. We couldn't, we, we, Mr. Lynch could never ask, well, I guess you could ask for that private section to be--
Accepted.
Accepted, because he doesn't own it. You know, um, the owners would probably have to ask that typically, typically, like when we, when we're filing for the, um, board for a certificate of compliance or a, um, you know, to sign off on a final road and we want to go on to, we want you to put it on the warrant to be accepted, you ask the owner, the developer--
The developer.
--to accept the road. So I've never seen where somebody--
Well, that's why I was asking, because this is essentially a private road.
It's a private road. The only piece you could ask for would be this new piece that's being built, which, you know--
Public, private, public.
I know.
Doesn't make any sense.
If you're sitting on town meeting floor, I think you'd have a lot of questions.
I think you would.
And you would have a lot of questions, I think, if it was brought before you because you have to make a recommendation.
Yeah. I'd like to see that get worked out, um, before we really move too far with it. And I think that involves the neighbors and the, the people who actually own the right to Orchard Place at this point in time.
Who owns it?
Well, we are not, we are not, we're not saying that we want it to be accepted and we have no intention of doing it.
You could actually amend it, say that it won't, you know, you, I mean, for, I mean, they could always try to go back and amend that, but, you know, we have in other projects like this said that the road will not be accepted.
Remain positive.
Yeah. Who owns Orchard Way?
The last lot on the left, right?
Yeah, the condominium, six, six dash eight Orchard Place owns the lot.
Technical owners.
So they have sort of a narrow strip leading up to their property where they have that two-unit property.
If you look at the plan, it's Cameron and Sampson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm still, I'm still not warm and fuzzy with how it's going to be maintained though. If you've got Cameron and Sampson are liable for their portion of it, then who's liable for the portion that Mr. Lynch is going to do?
The owners of the condominium, then now own the road.
That's not, I don't have the warm and fuzzy--
But is it a real road or is it partial?
Well, their, their section.
It's this. I'm going to plow my half of it and you're screwed.
Yeah. It's not very neat.
I love having you as a member.
It's not neat.
Not very neat. Not very neat.
I love having you as a member.
It's not neat.
Not very neat. Not very neat.
No. No, I'd like to see that get cleared up.
Yeah. I would agree.
Beyond that, I'm not overly uncomfortable with anything else. Being honest.
So, and I know that there were some questions about runoff. I mean, I remember in an earlier meeting, there was some, there was some, not comment, but statement made that the original plan was for drainage to go down to Main Street, and I'm sure that there'll be some that will get, will migrate down there. But it appears that, based on this design now, that between the infiltration and the actual cuts and fills, that really most of it is gonna maintain right onto that, on that site.
So what we've done is, anything coming off of our road sidewalks is gonna be retained on our site. There will be widening of Orchard Place, you know, because it's not 18 feet wide.
Right.
So, but what you're dealing with, again, so that is, that's not under subdivision control, that's separate. So it's going to be going, it's gonna be going under, we asked the DPW and said, um, actually, it was the town's consultant, BSC Group, had a question about that. Said, well, you're, you're adding some paving down there on Orchard Place. Does the town have an issue with, with that additional paving going down into the drains on Main Street? And I believe you have in your, somewhere in your correspondence, Gabby specifically asked the town engineer to answer that question, and I believe he did, and he answered it in the negative, that they don't have an issue with it. And under the, again, under the stormwater regulations, they, if you are doing a redevelopment and you're not widening it more than one lane width, one lane width is 12 feet. If you're not widening it more than one lane width, exempt from the DEP stormwater standards. You're also exempt from the DEP stormwater standards for one house. So it's less than four houses, you're exempt. So I don't know what the town engineer based his opinion on, but that's in there somewhere.
Yeah, Mr. Gallagher did comment on this, and he, you know, he says, "The comments Lance submitted were on the submitted full build-out of plans. While there is some fill on the backside of the cul-de-sac/sidewalk closest to the Hunt property, there would be reduction in runoff to the said property. The majority of the cul-de-sac will actually be getting cut down to the proposed grade. From the back of the sidewalk through the cul-de-sac, will all be sloped to the recharge system. The only concern to raise would be how they plan to stabilize the new slope from the edge of sidewalk toward the Hunt property line. I highlighted the piece on the plan that shows the cut and fill through the section roadway sidewalk. If you have any questions, let us know." And it's, as opposed to what I was led to believe, it actually is an improvement in terms of the existing grade.
Yeah, we always do that, and we, we always have to do that. We have to either maintain or make it less.
Yes.
And the way we, the way we stabilize those slopes is the way we always do. You know, it's a lawman's seat. It's not a steep slope.
So, Bill, you're gonna be actually widening part of the existing Orchard?
Yeah.
It always was. As privately owned.
Yes.
And the owners...
So you have to work out a deal with the owners anyways?
No, they, they have a very viable access easement. As a matter of statutory and common law, they have the right to improve it, install utilities under it. Access is not an issue.
Who has the right to do that? The current owners?
No. The, the owner of this Orchard Place lot, under discussion. This is a way that was actually created before subdivision. And, and had this happen to have the 100-foot of frontage that we need, this would be what I'd call a frontage waiver request meeting. It has suitable width and grade, it's going to be improved. We absolutely have the right to do that. That's really clear. I did actually brief that, and I've submitted it.
Yeah, it was very old language, right, that you submitted a couple meetings ago, the research you did on this, if I recall?
Is it old language?
No, it was old documents.
Previously submitted, right.
Ye olde language.
Ye olde language. It was old documents, that's what I meant.
Right, right. Yeah, I submitted several things when we were having those informal discussions.
So, so, Bill, I was curious, because I, you know, I don't think I've heard of a situation until now where they're gonna do a waterline out of a contiguous plastic pipe. Is that the standard that they're using now, or?
Yeah, so as long as you, you know, they, before, they used to limit you because of the brass, and they didn't want, not seams, connections.
Connections, yeah.
So, but with the plastic pipe, they can run that forever and have it contiguous. And then what they, the town used to require is down at the entrance, I forget what the distance was, maybe over 200 feet. They always wanted a box down there, a valve pit. And now, and that's what I said, and they said, "No, we don't want valve pits anymore. We just want a service." I said, "Okay." So that's what we'll do, is we'll bring a plastic service up here, and we'll serve the, the building, the new building on this lot. And they also asked us, because they really don't have a good handle on what's there now, so they said, "Well, you tie the existing house, this existing duplex, into the new service." And we said, "Of course."
So, and there's one, there's one septic system for both sides of the proposed condominium, is that right?
Yes.
So each person or just, the documents will just say that they're both responsible in equal fashion, yada, yada, yada?
Yeah, typical, typical for duplex.
And this, it's not gonna be rental, you're gonna sell the units, correct?
Yeah, most likely.
That was not definitive, Mr. Lynch.
Excuse me?
That was not definitive.
Most likely.
Depends on where the market goes.
If the rental rates go to $6,000 a month, I'll consider renting.
Well, I'm trying to avoid that.
Exactly.
That's the new affordable rate. I'm just trying to see if there's a lot of correspondence between the town engineer and everybody here, but I'm trying to see if there's anything...
Yeah, we did go back to, you know, we saw Lance, the town engineer's original comment, and after talking with Kevin, and we wanted to be very clear, so we specifically asked about cuts and fills and impact on Main Street, and did read the responses. Actually, Chris jumped in at that point, so we have, we really vetted that from that perspective with DPW.
So there is something here from Matthew Brennan, it says, from the Health Department, it says, "Gabby, the Health Department is aware that the owner of Orchard Place subdivision has requested a variance from the planning board. If the Orchard Place subdivision is created, the septic system on 18 Baker Street will not be in compliance with Title V, because it will be in a different lot than it serves. However, the owner has stated to the Health Department personnel that if planning board approves the subdivision, he will then make the necessary repairs to the septic system on 18 Baker Street. Therefore, if the subdivision is approved, the Health Department will notify the owner in writing that the property is no longer compliant with the code and must be repaired in accordance to Title V. I would also recommend that this be added as a condition of the variance if granted by the planning board. The Health Department will then follow up as needed until the property complies with the code."
It's a little confusing.
So I can explain that if you want.
Yes, if you don't mind.
So this is a, let me just, bring this up here, it's not on here, but, so, when this lot was created, so back before this was purchased by Mill Street, this house, 18 Baker down here, had to have a new septic system put in. So a new septic system was installed by the owner at that time, not Mill Street Preserve.
The previous owner or the...
Previous owner.
Previous owner, okay.
Yeah, previous owner. So the, the system was shown in this area here, kind of in this area here. And when we did our form A, we had the design drawing, which showed it, and it showed, okay, it's on the new lot, great. And then, after the, after that, we found out through the as-built, which we didn't have at the time, that a corner of the septic system is over what would be on this lot here, kind of down in this area right here. So we went and talked to Mr. Brennan and said, you know, this is the issue. What we can do is, if this is, he keeps saying variance, I think he just didn't understand the process. If this is what is constructed, if what we're looking at today is what is constructed, then a corner of that septic system will be off the property. And so what we could do is take one line, trenches, and rebuild the system, so it's all on 18 Baker Street. That's really what he was saying. Of course, ideally, we would not have to do that, because if we had a different design, which I hope we talk about tonight, then, then this lot wouldn't even be this configuration, and that wouldn't be an issue at all. We would be putting it on, it would stay on 18 Baker Street, because the 18 Baker Street lot wouldn't end up being bigger than it is today.
How so? Wouldn't the layout remain the same?
I'm sorry, Dave.
Wouldn't the layout remain the same?
No. So what we would hope to talk about tonight, I know where he had to talk about this, but I hope at some point we're talking about perhaps granting waivers. And then one of the things that we would do, like to do, is if the waivers were granted and the cul-de-sac was reconfigured to perhaps something what we showed at the beginning, then we could convey all of this land here that is...
It's about 5,000 square feet.
It's about 5,000 square feet. We would convey that to 18 Baker, and then that way, the original 18 Baker Street lot would go back to what it was. If you remember before, it was, it was two lots, but really, it wasn't. It was in 1D, but it was two lots. So what we'd like to do is make that one lot, the same lot again, and then that issue
Is that it for correspondence? That's it. I mean, there's voluminous correspondence from Lance, the town engineer, going back and forth.
Fire?
I didn't see any. I'll double-check it.
Tracy's lights on fire.
I am lights on fire.
Unless it's after the BSC commentary. Current plan? Wait, yeah, maybe it's back here behind BSC's commentary. No, I don't see it.
It's an email from Dave Larsing.
Who was it, Dave, Bill?
It was, it was like the big, it was the beginning and middle of next last week, I think, maybe.
Is Gabby online?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess, maybe I did not put it in the folder. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Do you recall it?
Yeah, the, the email, the original email had said that they were requiring the trees to be limbed, and the width of the road to be 20, 20 feet wide. And then he, he remembered that at the, at the, at the meeting, the professional meeting, that they had agreed that 18 feet would be the width that was agreeable, acceptable to the fire department. And that is in my notes, too, that 18 feet width was what was acceptable to them.
Okay. Thank you. Are you asking for waivers?
We're not asking for any waivers, but with this design, we're not asking for any waivers. What I, what I would hope, what we would hope, is that now that we've, in my opinion, proved to you that we could build this as-is, that we could go back to discussing the waivers. And then if we can discuss waivers, then we would be talking about things like making 18 Baker Street the same lot that it was prior to March, and then perhaps some additional screening in areas. So, you know, things like that. As we sit here today, you know, it's, in our opinion, it's in accordance with the design. We're not asking for any waivers, so there's really nothing to discuss.
Might be putting the cart before the horse, but do you have a drawing or rendering that would show what you're considering proposing?
I do. What I'd like to do is pop up basically one that you, we saw.
Gabby's back.
The original drawing.
I just wanna see it here.
It's this one right here. There it is. So this should look familiar to the board. And this was actually the very first one that we showed you, you know, whenever, forever ago. And what it is, is it shows Orchard Place being widened, and in general, you know, this is more cartoonish. It shows Orchard Place being widened to 18 feet. It shows, and then it comes into the site, and, you know, I don't really know how the driveways are going to go. Maybe it's one driveway up the middle, I'm not sure. But we showed two driveways here, and we show a little turnaround. So if the fire department ever had to come in, they could pull in, back, and just pull straight out, very similar to other projects that we've done. You can see here that this is the original lot. So this lot is the, would be the original 18 Baker Street lot, and then this would be that, that back lot, which is still more than large enough to handle the project. It would have over 15,000 square feet, and it would have more than 100 feet of frontage. We would ask, we would be asking for waivers, the normal waivers, I think, you know, that we've seen in the past, when the board has, you know, looked at these, and so the roadway would be, the cul-de-sac would be not a standard cul-de-sac. You can see it's kind of like a half moon instead of a full one. We wouldn't be building a cul-de-sac. The, we wouldn't be putting lighting, we wouldn't be putting, you know, a street light in there, but we would have the lighting that we normally see on a driveway, so it would be driveway lighting at the end there. There wouldn't be sidewalks. There wouldn't be curbing. And then the drainage would be something very simple, probably over on the left, the bottom, as you look at it, we'd pitch the road in that direction and then use a concrete, I'm sorry, a crushed stone trench as infiltration, very easy to maintain. I think actually the town engineer put that in his memo, that he thought that that would be a good idea to do something like that, much easier to maintain than underground drainage. So this would be a look. I mean, in my opinion, you know, it takes away a lot of the issues that were being You know, this septic system is one of them. You know, I, you know, there was discussion on the historic district. This puts the entire historic district on 18 Baker, even though it's not a planning board issue, but it would take that, put the entire historic district on the 18 Baker lot, and this would just be one house or one duplex on that lot.
What's the benefit to the town?
The benefit to the town is, is that, you know, I, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be building it to that full standard. I think if you had a chance to look at the engineers' comments, you can see that they, even they recommend granting waivers, because it's, not silly, silly's a bad word, it's not necessary to build that large of a cul-de-sac and to build sidewalks to nowhere. So you'd be...
Benefit to the applicant, not to the town.
Well, it's a benefit if you want to talk about things like stormwater management and things like that. That is a benefit when you're minimizing the amount of impervious area. That is a, that's always something that everybody's always pushing to do. So that would be a thing. And then, then of course, we would immediately agree, and it could be part of the conditions that we would accept, that the roadway, this portion of it, the new piece, would always remain private. We couldn't even come in and ask for it to be a public way. So that would be it. It wouldn't necessarily be for the town, but it would be for, I think, for the, in an overall, I would, I would call it neighborhood. You know, you don't want, would you really want that big cul-de-sac?
It's impactful.
Up in that area. Right, that impact in that area. Any other things we could talk about would be things like, I'm sure that are gonna be brought up, there are always concerns, and they were brought up at other meetings, is things like buffering, which, under subdivision control, we don't have to address, we just don't have to. But we, as a condition of granting waivers, we could, we could talk about things like that. Fairway Lane isn't a good example. We did some buffering in that area there for some of the neighbors when the town was waived it down to 12 feet. That was actually a 12-foot drive-in.
Yeah, and that project's been nothing but a headache, so.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes you can outlaw, you know, who is gonna build stuff, but I would think that's, it wasn't... I would think that's, it wasn't so much the design. I think it was more the...
Yeah, but jamming something in there, and people don't understand that a road layout is a road layout, and they could just, so I'm just, I'm just trusting that on the staff side, we continue to have repercussions, repercussions of leeway.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Maybe it would be good just to take a minute, because we're talking about this, this process of waivers, or even this process that we're in, just for people at home, just to spell out a little bit of what's really gone on here, you know, over the past three, four months. And in that, folks may not all always know that it's, it's not uncommon in different non-traditional situations where applicants will come in before this board through the Subdivision Control Act and seek waivers that may be considered beneficial both to the applicant as well as to the community at large. And Mr. Buckley was just sort of generally talking about some of those. In this particular case, and, and maybe it is true that more recently, that, that type of engagement has, has maybe come a little prematurely in some of our cases, where applicants have come in and right up front said, "It would be great if we could have these waivers." And because this is a little more sensitive, board members had specified something that we always know anyway, which is, we need to be comfortable and assured that if we don't grant these waivers, or if, if we are going to consider waivers, rather, you need to be able to prove that you can build this project and have it conform conventionally. And in this particular case, the applicant did that. So now we have a conventional application before the board right now that is going to be in conformance with the Subdivision Control Act. And when we talk about waivers from this point forward, any that would be considered, would be considered on the basis of minimizing impacts of something that has been proven to the, the board, or, and, and through our town specialists, you know, our town engineer, our town planning director, that can be built conventionally. And I just wanted to make that kind of clear, because it, it is, you know, it's almost like a little bit of insider baseball, maybe, that, you know, people sitting here kind of get and others don't.
Everything you said is true, but I think part of what drove this particular thing in this particular case, there was multiple layers of it. Part of it was questions from the historic commission there, about, abouting neighbors. But one of the biggest things that drove it was, it's not on the board anymore, that partial cul-de-sac.
Yes, yes.
And because, you know, in, in often cases, they would walk in right in the door and say, "Here, we can build this whole thing and see how it works, and here's what we'd like to build, and here's the waivers we would like you to consider in the lesser construction." In this case, it was sort of a, I don't want to say peculiar, but it was its own honorable. We've never seen anybody come in and say, "Here, we can do this three-quarter, one-half cul-de-sac, and that ought to be enough of you." So we really did ask the applicant to go back and say, "Show us the whole thing. Show us you can really do it."
Well, not to mention the private road part, which is a whole separate animal.
Right, right. Not to mention the private road part and the frontage on Main Street. There were, there were several mitigating factors, but if you wanted to say something.
Building on what Jeff said is, that is all true. And, you know, a lot of times, this board, if you go back and look at it, the board has been presented with these projects. Usually it's a two-lot subdivision, sometimes one. And the developer is able to say, "Hey, we can build this by right, but we all know the town doesn't want to accept this road, and, you know, it's really in the best interest for the town not to do it." This is not an instance where the town would be having to take this road. So that one major argument that this board is always up against does not exist here. And I would further say that, again, they have proven they can do it by right, and I don't think anybody wants to see that. But on the other hand, I think if you start allowing these little half cul-de- like, we have two people waiting in the wings for the next meeting that didn't want to come in tonight to get, like, caught up in this, but we have two more projects seeking to do waivers again. So this is now becoming rote. You know, we now have a developer not dealing with land that he already had trying to make it work. He's now purchasing land, putting a septic system in jeopardy on an existing house, blah, 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 and now doing this. So, and that's all well and good. I don't blame Joe for doing this. This is the market, it's the land, you know, and I understand that. But on the other hand, this board has to decide what you guys are going to do moving forward. I mean, Jeff and I were talking a little beforehand, and is this something we should put into a, a regulation at this point? Because this is becoming so by rote, you know, and now it's like, now you're being asked to do a half cul-de-sac so that you can give the septic system back to the people that had it originally? I mean, so there's a lot of finagling, and to Gary's point, I don't know exactly what the benefit to the town is. You know, I don't think the neighborhood's really happy to see a full build, so that is the downside.
Correct.
Like, you know, if, if the, the planning board takes a tough stance, which in my opinion, you should, but I've said that for every one of these projects, is call the bluff. Let's see. Let them build it, you know? I mean, I know you've said it happened in other things, but I bet you there were more than a duplex. So, and I hate to do that to Joe Lynch the person, but I just think as a land policy, you all have to figure out what, what your role is going to be. And maybe this is a helpful way to create, you know, do we need housing? You know, we need more duplexes? I don't know if half a million dollar duplexes are it, but, you know, I'm sure someone will buy it. So obviously, there is a demand out there, so I don't want to judge on that. But it will change the character, but it also is a broader policy on your end of how you guys want to handle these things.
And the list of waivers is still what they were before? Is that right?
It's, yes, it's all the same, similar ones that we, we ask, where basically we want to build a glorified driveway. You know, it's a glorified driveway. In this particular case, it's 18 feet wide, and they've, and in the past however many years we've been doing this, they vary from 12 feet to probably 18 is probably the biggest.
So let me just provide clarity, because there was a lot of words said over there, and they were all, they were all very helpful from both Jeff and Paige. So based on, and I know the answer to this, but based on what they've submitted, he's proved, they've proven to us that they can build it according to, so they can do this by right. They don't need...
Well, you have to prove it, but you really don't have a basis to deny it.
Right. So as it's shown here, we don't have the basis to deny it. But this necessarily isn't in the best, you know, the neighbors may be like, "We'd rather have the one with the waivers instead." And then it's balancing what's best for the town, what's best for a developer who does invest a lot in our town, and what's best for the neighbors.
That's okay?
I know. I was just kind of summing it up.
Can we hear from the neighbors?
I'd like to add just one, one more thing to, in terms of what I'd call neighborhood benefits. But in front of, and I don't know how this happened originally, but in front of Six and Eight Orchard, there's an existing shed, and there are two legal or, let's say, deeded parking spaces for the condominium. And I've met with the owner of that condominium and expressed my, you know, sense of cooperation. If, if I'm able to work with the board and, and create waivers and, and do something that's going to, what I think fits better into the neighborhood, I can relocate the shed, I can relocate the parking spaces, I can provide an easement for her so that the parking spaces aren't far away from the front door, and it fits as best as it can, but it doesn't block the road, which I have an access easement to. So I just, we hadn't talked about yet, that yet, and it wasn't shown in the plan. I just wanted the board to know that.
So I will open it up to people in the audience. If you have a question or comment, like I said earlier, just come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Anybody?
Jeff, can you just put, oh, you're going to go to that one? Never mind.
Hi, I'm Jean Cameron. I live at Six Orchard Place. I don't want this to happen at all. I'm going to keep this really brief. Every, when the building starts, before and after, everybody's going to be pulling in my driveway. You can say it's going to be 25 feet long, but you're also adding two half a million duplexes that may have two or four cars in each, and then our two or four cars for each of our condos. Everybody is going to be turning around in my driveway. Everybody. This private way easement right-of-way, whatever it's called, somehow has got to be dealt with because it's just going to get worse. We've had a terrible year with trash removal. Trash wouldn't come down that road anymore, not just because of the potholes, but the access. Once they get in, they can't get back out. So it means with the circle, if anything were to go ahead, they should do the cul-de-sac, so anybody who comes in has to do a turnaround. Otherwise, everybody's going to be backing up into my driveway to get off of the street. And I'm glad Mr. Lynch mentioned the shed. We met with Ellen to discuss a few things if it were to go forward. Where would you find space to put four parking spaces for her? She now has four parking spaces. I don't know how long cars have been parking for her side in front of that shed. Shed's been there for 20 years. My daughter has a friend who owned the house in the 90s. It's the same layout. House has been in the same place for 100 and some, 100 and something years. And now the land next door is being built on, and access is going to be pushed through the front of my house, which is a nice little quiet area. And you bring a whole lot more people there that it's just going to change the whole aesthetic why I bought the house five years ago in the first place. So I don't see that written or anything in any of the plans, the shed, her parking spaces. How are you going to get trucks, pallets of wood, all that stuff up to that lot of land? You're going to have to go through Orchard Place day in, day out, for I don't know how long it's going to take to build, to bring all that stuff in. It's, it's going to be a nuisance for me. I mean, I'll block off my driveway if I have to. I don't know if I understood this right. When 18 Baker was sold back in 2020, she owned two lots of land, one where the house stood and the one behind her. Were they part of one parcel of land? Or did you guys split the land into two parcels?
Want to get that one?
Yeah.
I can address that.
I want to ask the answer, Kevin.
Yeah, so when you, when parcels of land are contiguous to one another, they merge for zoning purposes. In this case, years ago, before subdivision or zoning was enacted in Foxborough, they were two separate lots. 18 Baker on its own lot, which is really what we'd like to return to. And then in the rear was a parcel accessed over Orchard Place, which has been there since before the 40s. And I have a plan that shows that there was a shop located. I don't know what the shop was, but there was a shop located, and its access was over Orchard Place. So in any event, for zoning purposes, when you have two lots, that used to be two lots, but they, they are contiguous and they touch, then they merge for zoning purposes, they effectively become one lot, and then you have to do some form of development if you want to restore them to two lots. In this case, Baker Street completely complies with all zoning. The rear lot has the necessary size and all the setbacks, but it needs some additional frontage. In terms of the, the parking in the shed, I confirmed with a prior owner at Orchard Place that the shed was built in approximately 2005. The condominium was created in 2002. So your only way to be able to maintain an encroachment over a valid right-of-way would be to have what's called adverse possession.
Because the right-of-way has been there. How long has the right-of-way been given to us?
Right-of-way's been there since at least the 40s.
Okay. So people have been parking in front of the house and aside the house, the driveway and our parking spaces?
Well...
So...
The condominium was created in 2002. The shed was built in 2005. Neither of those gives the necessary 20 years of continuous and adverse use to give you a claim to be able to maintain those. That, so that's, that's a legal argument, but that is why, one of the many reasons why we believe the waiver plan is better for everybody, because it allows the shed. She couldn't have four parking spaces on a 25-foot right-of-way, so I don't know where the other two are. But this, this would allow a solution where there are still two parking spaces, there's still a shed located by virtue of an easement on Joe's land.
But it's another easement.
Right.
As I mentioned to you that day, if this has to go forward, something is going to be done. I'm not going to be responsible for Orchard Place as a right-of-way. I don't understand why the town can't just take it over then. And I'm not going to cover expenses for additional homes that are going to be driving up and down and using the road. I just want to say I'm not for this. I don't want it at all. It's going to change everything for me back there. And I know my neighbors don't want it there. So that's all. I just, that was it. Thanks.
Excuse me.
Ma'am? Yeah, sorry. No, you're fine. Thank you for speaking. A question, and you speak on behalf of yourself, your neighbors, whatever, is he's proven that, I mean, he has the right to do it this way.
I know.
So would you, would you, would you want it this way? Or would you want it that other drawing that would involve all the waivers?
No, we'd rather have the circle if it has to go forward. But I don't know where they're going to find the room to put four parking spaces for my neighbor who's losing her parking spaces in front of the house.
If, if, if we build the circle, there will be no parking spaces and the shed will be moved.
Then that's a problem.
If you grant the waivers, then we would have the room to move the shed and to put the two parking spaces that are on her condo deed.
How can you, how can you, if you build it to spec the way it is right now, how can you take away something that she's entitled to by her deed?
Well, this is an argument. It's a legal argument, and it would be a private argument. I mean, it's really...
Well, it sounds like there's just, there's two, there's two deeded parking spaces by, for, there's two for each, but it sounds like your neighbor has had the use of four. So she's had the benefit of two additional ones that weren't deeded to her. Is that what I'm hearing?
Are you only talking about the two additional ones, or are you talking about two at all?
Just two.
She, she can have four SUVs parked in that spot.
Right, but they're not deeded to her legally by her home.
So there are two on...
There's two.
Two.
Yeah, but are those located on an easement? Is that, is that, I mean, are the, the deeded spots on this right-of-way, is that the problem?
How can it be on the deed if it wasn't us to deed it there in the first place?
No, I know. I'm just asking.
Well, that, that's why this stuff is so confusing.
Jeff?
So, yeah, so I don't know exactly how the condo was created in that manner. It was an error to, to block a valid right-of-way. You know, somebody made a title mistake.
So with this, so right now legally, they have, I'm, I'm asking a question. They, each condo, there's two condos, has two deeded parking spaces.
I actually don't know that. I don't have all the condos.
My, my driveway on my side is like 50 feet long.
Yeah, this comes down to what's deeded, because if there's...
Right.
If each of you has two deeded, but your neighbors had the benefit of two additional ones.
Right.
Well, it's kind of like, be thankful she had the benefit of two additional ones for this duration of time. You know, it's not, she's not guaranteed those two additional for eternity. But I get, I mean, it's an adjustment. I should get that. But I'd like, I mean...
Two minutes concrete driveway parking.
What, what parking does those, each of those condos, are they entitled to?
So they're not entitled to any on the right-of-way itself, whether they're on the condo plan or not. That's why, we're not just trying to create the problem, we're trying to suggest a solution at the same time, which is complicated and part of this whole process, a very key part. So, but what you can't do, an easement is a property right. It's pretty much like owning property. You have a right to use it for certain purposes. So I can't deed myself the right to park two cars on your land or on an easement.
No, I get it. I get it. So where is that shed sitting?
Right in front of the gate.
Oh, I know where it is, but whose property is it on?
It's on the easement.
It's on the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So it's on Mr. Lynch's property?
No, it's on the easement. It's on the roadway.
On Orchard Place, but they, they own, but they have rights of access and easement and such to it. and such to it.
I have the condo doc here, if that help, if it is helpful at all.
Yeah, but we're not lawyers, so we're just trying to...
No, it's just a plan to show where everything is.
Yeah.
So I think the key is, and I think you've said this ma'am, but like, the, the buy-right plan, as we call it, the one that technically the board cannot deny, I mean, if they want to force the issue, the board pretty much has to approve it, would result in a pretty wide, I mean, you're going to end up with two sidewalks, you're going to end up with a very large cul-de-sac next to you. I mean, a lot of pavement.
I realize that.
And you know, I'm in support of them doing that, but I'm, I'm just saying, I want to also make sure the neighborhood understands that, you know, my desire to have the bluff called on a developer could, and I'm not saying that anybody's going to do that, but like, that's not considering the neighborhood impact. That's me on a policy point of view, wanting to take a stand. But it would hurt, probably...
It would hurt you guys more to do this.
Be painful for you guys to have that.
Well, for the cul-de-sac, but why do we need two, two sidewalks walking up Orchard Place?
Well, again, that's just, in order to, to sort of force the planning board's hand, they've proven that they can do this.
Right.
And if they want to force the hand, you know, the board doesn't, the push comes to shove, the board has to provide, approve the compliant plan. And our regulations require two sidewalks, X amount of pavement, what is it, how many feet pavement, and the full cul-de-sac. So you would end up with a very, that's only on the cul-de-sac though. On Orchard Place at least, that's not part of the subdivision, so that would just be the 18 feet of pavement. I don't know if there was a sidewalk on that bill.
Sidewalk, there's not even...
So the sidewalk would be around the cul-de-sac.
There's not even a fire hydrant on the street.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is...
Just so you understand, that's why we have these kind of complications.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And that's why I'm asking you, it's like, I get like, it's just understand that you, you have to all think about, I get, we, you know, push them to do this one, ultimately he could go and do this one, and I don't know if it would be better for you guys.
It would be so people aren't turning around in my driveway constantly.
I understand, that's a point of view actually, that I had not thought of.
Yeah, and no, that, that's...
And even while they're building, you know, two cars pull on that road, somebody's got to back away. There's no way around it.
Right.
So with cars coming in and out, even with the additional, these new owners to the townhouse, uh, townhouses, it's going to put more, more cars on that street.
They can do it.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
I guess we're trying to figure out the lesser of evils.
Yeah.
And, sorry, I don't mean to call it evil, but what, what, because I don't see a benefit to the town. I get, Mr. Buckley, I give you an A-plus for attempting, but I don't see a benefit to the town to do the other one, the funky looking one, over this one. I think it's a matter of, you know, we, we've got to, we've got to adhere to some sort of policy, but we've also got to balance the people who live there.
Yeah, we don't want to cut off your nose for, you know, like, it's like kind of to make a point, so that's...
Right, no, I get that. And I understand one way or the other, things are going to move forward, you know, whether I want them to or not. But I just, I don't want it there. I bought that house because of where it was. And it's just going to change it, opening it up. We're going to lose all those trees over there too. And I don't know, it's, it doesn't matter.
But perhaps, I mean, and again, you know where I sit on this, but thinking from your perspective, to have, you know, this massive expanse of pavement next to your home.
Right.
Compared to, yeah, it's a little funky, but it's going to maybe allow more landscaping, more natural environment. You might, just for that turnaround, you could end up with a parking lot next to you, basically. I mean, isn't that, Bill, how big is that cul-de-sac?
It's 84 feet across.
You're going to eat it 84 feet across, which is...
This room is approximately 30, 35.
So that's the, that's what we worry about. That's the, the complaint.
So the toss-up is...
Right, okay. I, I think I understand what you're saying now.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure like you don't, like, I, I hear you about people backing driveway drives, I mean, that's myself. But if it only happened, not only, but, you know, I think that, the biggest concern I'd have about that if I were you, and I don't live there, is during construction. And we can put conditions into waivers.
Yeah.
No, Tracy, that was a point I was just going to make as well, is if they go with the buy-right, we have no control, we have no say.
We have, we can put no conditions on it.
But even once they're there, I still am responsible for maintaining that road. Just spent $2,200 clearing the brush away. You know, I can't do the, the street now, and why would I? Because once they started talking about building back there, we discussed redoing the road. It's like, we're not going to do that now. Somebody's going to come in and tear it all up anyway.
Right, well, Jean, that was a question that I brought up as well earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's going, who's going to bring the road up to standard?
Right, because...
And it'd be them. And the question, you guys have got to figure out the maintaining, because...
Yeah, so my future buyers of duplex will pay for the roadway. They'll pay for the maintenance, snowplow, you know, cleaning up of the roadway.
Existing Orchard Place or the new Orchard Place?
Yeah, absolutely.
We can make that a condition of a waiver.
Now, going back to the...
Well, that would be something.
Absolutely.
Those are the type of things, because this isn't going to...
I mean, because the sharing of the cost, because both parties would be using it, makes common sense. But if it's a problem, then that's a solution.
Bill, is there any way to do a less funky design at the end to do a better turnaround that is maybe gives this woman some relief from the turnarounds, but doesn't, isn't 84 feet across?
Yes, yes we can. We can put a hammerhead and a fire truck and turn around in. And so then you'll be able to, and I, I'd be glad to work with you on that.
Let us give them opportunity, some other people.
Sorry, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Molly Kelleher. I live at 22 Baker Street with my husband Dan. We are second-generation Foxborough people. Our parents, both sets of parents grew up here, we grew up here. And we were thrilled to buy our house on Baker Street six years ago to be a part of the historic district and have this beautiful property. So I just wanted to express my disappointment at even the prospect of having our backyard totally changed. Even driving down or walking down Baker Street, which is such a beautiful spot to walk, people walk all the time down, up and down our street. When you look onto our property, you see beautiful old trees and a beautiful stone wall in the back. And when this process kind of happens, you're going to see potentially massive structure or tons and tons of pavement. The question was raised to our, our last person, whether, you know, if it has to be one or the other. I think unfortunately, you might get a different answer from different neighbors.
Absolutely.
Because clearly 22 Baker has an invested interest in not having so much of part of our land taken over by that full cul-de-sac. So our answer would surely be not to do that if we have no choice in something happening. But I just wanted to express my disagreement and disappointment at any of the prospects.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm Tom Kraus, 9 Baker Street, also chairman of the Historic District Commission. And one thing I take, I think the town has to acknowledge, is that the cul-de-sac is a structure, it's in the historic district, so they have to come before Historic District Commission with an application to get, get approval.
Actually, there's, there's been correspondence between Town Council and Paige, I believe, that it was determined that it isn't, because it's not a structure, it's...
A struc, a structure includes...
It's, no, the legal...
I didn't see that.
The legal...
It hasn't been released. I mean, it can be, but the, the reason being is, is the board wanted to keep the contents of their advice of their attorney.
Okay.
Private until such time that, for obvious reasons.
Okay.
But there's, there's also a historic fountain that's getting demolished, that's part of the historic district.
We didn't ask about that.
If they build a full cul-de-sac.
If the whole cul-de-sac.
I think the...
I mean, we're talking about a five, a five-foot, I mean, Bill described as a little bit of fill. It's, it's, Bill, I believe it's about five feet high? It's a question, Bill.
You can answer.
Yeah, you talk to the chairman, yes. At its highest point, it would be five feet of fill.
So it's five, five feet of fill, and there's a slope all this way. So I mean, it is a structure, I'll have to, I'd like to, because...
I'll defer you to Paige.
Sure. Paige, I think initially the Town Council did, did what, we had a meeting with him, remember?
He wasn't sure, right.
Right.
But Kevin and I, Kevin and I did attend the meeting.
It's a structure.
Yeah, he was pretty clear in our meeting, but...
He is, he is clear. He feels that it's not considered a structure, but I will, I'll let you have that conversation at some point in the picture.
So the, the other thing that I, I heard tonight for the first time about the septic system, I mean, he just said there was no as-built. Well, that's, there is as-built.
That's not what I said. Stop, stop saying things that aren't true. I said we didn't have the as-built when we did the first plan.
Okay, why?
Because we didn't.
But I, I'm saying that we, we drew the property lines crossing, the septic system is, is crossed, crossing. And I, I think that the town has a right to say they should not have accepted changing the property line. And that would not allow this...
Town has no set thing saying at all, it was a fore-made plan. Paige was very clear that the only thing they could, they had to approve it because it has frontage and access and it had, and the rear is labeled as non-buildable. So it's irrelevant. And the Board of Health has already spoken that they are satisfied that if there's a, if this goes through, we have a path ahead.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, the septic system was just put in as a good engineer that has laid out, and we know the property line, you would have known the property line cut, cut through that, and it was hidden.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not a good engineer.
It was hidden.
I think we just need to...
Yeah, I think we don't.
Yeah, let's, let's time this out. I think if, if you have questions about whether it's in historical, that's for you to take up with, you know, Mr. Costello.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, that's, that's another reason why we're trying to propose a solution to, that would allow us to keep everything out of historical and avoid the entire question, possible litigation, et cetera. Okay, I would like to ask one quick question before this gentleman speaks. If that were to happen, waivers to modify what you want to do, where, where does the fountain fall in? Is that still... Fountain stays with 18 Baker.
Fountain would stay on 18 Baker.
In the contract with 18 Baker, when they bought it, we, we have a reconveyance agreement that if, if we're able to develop this...
Sir?
I'm Bob Foster. I'm at 9 Bentwood Street. I'm in a butter. I've been in the neighborhood for about, in town for about 30 some odd years now. I'm against this project entirely because I think it'll fundamentally change the, the nature of the historic block in town. I guess I'm disappointed in hearing from the board that this is, you know, down to the lesser of evils here. And so evil is coming apparently, and that's just the way it is. And it's, I think the board, it would be, you know, my wish that the board also act in a, in, in a way that a, that makes a decision based on what should be done as opposed to just what can be done legally or otherwise within the town and within a neighborhood. Because in, in essence, you're putting a subdivision in the middle of at least eight abutting backyards. There is no front yard that, that, you know, the, this building will, will face nothing but backyards of people. And so there's a privacy issue. I submitted a, a letter back in March on the behalf of at least a dozen to 15 residents in the area that all feel the same way. So I think it's a singularly bad idea. I think that, you know, I, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that we're going in different directions, try to minimize the impact, but frankly, it's not going to work well. I mean, it's one neighbor against another. Frankly, I just as soon have the cul-de-sac because it puts that building as far away from my property as possible. But that's, that's the wrong thing to do because, you know, poor Mr. Hunt is, you know, has no, has no backyard. So what do we do here? You know, so now we're down to, you know, the, the lesser of however many evils, and I think that's kind of a bad place to be.
It is. And unfortunately, government deals with those things, situations, and that's what the wrestle is all about.
I know you're all jealous of our roles on this board right now. I know it.
Well, and if I could just say, because I've been a vocal person on this, is I think if evidence, this board has worked really hard. I mean, right down to keeping documents confidential, which in my experience, being here five years, we've never done, you know, from a legal perspective. So this board, in my, you know, to their credit, has done everything they can. The problem is, is like we said, the planning board is not allowed to deny a plan that is conforming. That's just state law, that is what it is. So, you know, I, you've heard me be in support of not this. And lesser of evils, that's the reality. Like Jeff said, this is government, I mean, the planning board is beholden to that. You know, so you, you can say, well, I wish you'd fight it, but there's really no grounds. We checked with Town Council, and honestly, it's just, at this point, you know, you could spend lots of legal counsel fighting this battle, but, you know, it's, it's a balancing act. Now it's trying to figure out if there's a way to work something out that's least egregious. You know, or you guys need to all get together and buy the land, because honestly, that's the way to, you know, you've, I mean, I hate to say it, but, I mean, someone else has owned this land, and Kevin, what is it you said?
Had the quiet enjoyment of someone else's property for over 30 years.
That's his famous line.
Yes, it is.
So, and I'm not, and I, and believe me, I understand, and I know that Mr. Foster and I had conversations about, was it, was there an opportunity for neighbors to band together and potentially go to Mr. Lynch and possibly purchase the land, you know, joint, you know, in a, in a joint fashion so that they could protect that, what they see is their interest? And for whatever reason, that hasn't happened. And I can't say why, and I don't think it really matters why. So now we just have to deal with the reality, which is if there's not a legal way for us to deny, what is the best way forward for the parties? And, you know...
Yeah, I understand.
On the one hand, when we started this whole thing, then it's not just an exercise so they can prove to us this. In the very beginning, John, who's, who's now retired from our board, the so, the alternative member, he, he, the associate member, he used an expression which was, this one's giving me heartburn. And he, and he specifically said, you have to show to us the public good. What is the public good? If we give you the waivers, if you do this, if you do that. So depending on where you sit, you know, the public good may be that less is more. I don't have a big road in my backyard, I can't land an airplane there, and there's not a huge septic, there's not a huge, you know, drainage system with an underground tank that's going to infiltrate everything. You don't have the five-foot, you know, fill that, that Mr. Kraus is, is talking about, you know. But then the woman who was here for the conduit says, heck, they're all going to be turning around on my driveway. And her point about construction vehicles is a very valid one.
It is.
I mean, you know, it's a small road and, and it's completely valid in terms of why fix it now when it's going to get crushed down with, you know, with, with heavy traffic. But even more important is like, how, how is that, how, how is it going to be accomplished? And that, if, if we get that far, we're going to have to just have a very serious conversation with the admin about how and what they'll be allowed to do, hours of operation and everything else. Paige is right. I mean, you know, a lot of people don't understand this, but under the Fifth Amendment, he owns the land, he has rights. It's not just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to testify on behalf of myself and, and admit to a crime. It also has rights specifically about land ownership and the right to develop. That's a, that's a constitutional right. So in this point, case, Mr. Lynch now owns this piece of property. He's made a different decision than the families that have owned 15 Baker Street for the better part of 100 years, close to 100 years. And, and, you know, he, he has seen an opportunity to do this, and he, he has certain rights. Now, we've pushed him to say, if you really want to do this, you got to show us you can do it. And we could, as a board, say, great, go ahead. a board, say, "Great. Go ahead. You're gonna screw up the whole neighborhood anyway? Build the full Monty. Do it all." And some neighbors might say, "Better than a stick in the eye." And other neighbors are gonna say, "That's the most horrible thing. How could the board do that?" So, what we'll have to try to accomplish is, you know, the most reasonable thing. Listen, there's, there's, you know, Mr. Kraus believes that the historical commission's gonna have certain rights, and I'm sure that they're gonna pursue whatever their rights are, you know, in, in contesting the possibility of, of which way the board may vote. And, and they're, they're entitled to do that. And they may, they may have a, a home there that they can deal with. I can't speak to that. I'm not an attorney, and I, and I don't know much about, you know, the rights of the historical district, you know, what they really have, have as rights. So, unfortunately, you know, believe me, this does not give the board joy. It's a very difficult one, you know, for us to have to sit here tonight and try to figure out what the best decision's gonna be. It is. And we, believe me, we are sympathetic to you and the other five or six neighbors who own your street, and the other ones who kitty-corner in for both sides of 15 Baker Street, who feel like their privacy and their private enjoyment is gonna change. And it is, it potentially is going to change. So, how do we do the best thing for, for everybody when we get there, if we get there? So, that's the best answer I can give you this evening.
Thanks, Kevin.
You're very welcome, Mr. White.
In the interest of time, because we do have another hearing, meeting after this. And again, I say this in a depressed fashion, because you know I, what I feel about this. But if you do go for the waiver, or a waiver plan rather than the buy-rite plan, I would suggest certain considerations, like the duplex folks responsible for plowing and maintaining of all of Orchard Place, that they have to relocate the shed, relocate, you know, at least four parking spaces, two and two, that the cul-de-sac could be smaller, that screening could be provided to Baker-Bentwood neighbors and the Orchard Place neighbors, the fountain would stay, and then maybe a construction management plan for use of Orchard during construction. Those are the things I've been writing down as we've been talking about the issues. So, again...
Well, I think, and you're right about those types of conditions. I think that might be a little premature. We really haven't even kind of got into the meat of a waiver discussion.
Exactly.
Well, I don't think you're gonna approve it tonight. I don't think we have time to do this. But I just wanted to put this out because we might be giving Bill some homework and giving, you know, like, I'm trying to move this along because it's nine-thirty and we have another hearing.
We will probably continue. This is just a minute, but if there are people here, I just wanna know if anybody else has anything that they feel they need to say this evening? If you do, please come up and talk.
Joshua Hunt, 18 Baker Street. Hi. So, it kind of impacts me a bit, as you can imagine.
Yes, sir.
The cul-de-sac, that goes like right up to my house. So, I...
I get it.
Yeah, it's very close. So, that would be helpful to not have it go up to my house like that. Also, a streetlight, that's, I mean, I don't need that in my bedroom window all the time. I lived in the city before. I came to a town because it's a town with no streetlights in my bedroom window. Also, regards to the fountain in the back, I mean, if, if there is no cul-de-sac, I can fix it and make it work. I mean, I don't know anybody who has a fountain in the, I thought that, I just thought that alone was pretty cool.
I would agree with you.
But yeah, overall, fountain, not the fountain, cul-de-sac, I'm really against the cul-de-sac. I realize he can do it. So, whatever waivers are gonna be considered, I really would appreciate.
Well, I think at the end of the day, sir, it's gonna take input, as you folks are giving us tonight, moving forward, input from the board with the applicant to try to find out what is going to be the least impactful...
Yes.
...and the most favorable to all parties.
Yes.
And that's what we're here for.
Right. And as I just mentioned, yeah, right up to the house. So...
Yeah. Get it.
As you see the plan, sir.
And welcome to Foxborough.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
Well, we need it time-specific. Diana?
September ninth is the next meeting.
September nine at...
Do we have any...
Set time?
Have those two informals?
We have two informals.
The seven forty-five.
Are you gonna wanna come, both? Water?
Oh, wait.
Water Street and Spring are both these?
I'll just cancel Water.
Okay. Spring we'll probably hold off too, then, because both of them are this type of development, different. But, you know, everybody's sort of waiting to see what the planning board does.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen?
Second.
Well, there's a paper.
Hi.
We're counting very much.
Thank you all very much.
So, just so you know, another public hearing notice will not be sent out. The meeting's scheduled for the ninth at seven fifteen. We offer it on Zoom. And always feel free to email or call us and make sure it's still on. Every so often, a meeting gets canceled. So, if you want to check before you leave your home, feel free.
It's been ordered about.
Almost ten o'clock.
All right. So, let's just, I'll tee this up. The, there's been a local initiative project submitted to the Board of Selectmen, seeking their support before they file with the state. The selectmen have asked the planning board to get this presentation, and they are hoping for a comment letter in time for the meeting next Tuesday night.
Oh, nice to give us a little time to just make a decision.
Well, no rush. If we, if we need more time, we can have it. But I'm, I'm gonna aim to get something out.
Before they even do their presentation. Why should the town do a lip? Period.
I don't get what that is.
That's a local initiative. It means that the selectmen are partners in this. They break into the state.
You didn't read the paperwork today?
I didn't.
So, don't, I'm, and I'm asking in a rhetorical sense. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I am asking why they should do it.
I don't know if you have the right crowd here for that answer.
I guess not. So, why don't you make your presentation?
So, good evening.
Bill's like, I'm getting out of here.
My name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here representing Michael Seg. And we're here tonight to make a presentation to the board. As Paige pointed out, that we met with the selectmen, and we've actually met with the town's professional staff. And now, we wanted to brief you, give you just a briefing on our project. You have these drawings here in front of you. These are the preliminary plans that have been done for this site. I think everybody's familiar with the property. It is, if you go to the first sheet, there's an aerial photo. And this is the old Willow Grove Nursery. So, as you look at it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share this.
Where's Moore Street again?
There was, it says Moore Street.
I know where it is.
It's too far forward.
It goes from Cocasset Street to Miners.
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
The Borough School is the backside of the Borough School?
I run on that. Okay.
Yep. So, there's Moore Street. So, if you, the upper right is toward Cocasset Street. The lower left is toward Mansfield. This is Bleachery Pond. And you can see the house in the middle here, in the middle of the site. And this was, for many years, the Willow Grove Nursery. And probably around nineteen, two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven-ish, Mike Seg purchased the property. And we actually permitted the site for forty-three thousand square feet of commercial contractor base, actually forty-five thousand square feet. That was gonna be in seven separate buildings. And we permitted that through the planning board, and we permitted it through the Conservation Commission. And of course, everybody knows what happened in two thousand and eight. So, this was never built. So, what Mr. Seg has done is, we've prepared a, a design that we'll show you in a minute. But what I wanted to do is give you just a little bit more background on it. This is about six acres of land, and it's surrounded on, well, I would say, most of the sides. Let me just go to the next sheet. If we were, if I'm pointing this out, up, you could see over here in the upper-left corner, this is conservation land. Up top is conservation land. Over here on the right is conservation land. And the down here in the lower-right corner, which is hard to see because it is, there's, but if you look under your drawings, which is the next sheet, you'll see there's a single-family house. Bleachery Pond is owned by the conservation, and across the street, Bleachery Pond is there as well. And what I want to point out is that this is part of the Rumpford River Green Belt. There's about four hundred acres of conservation land that stretches from here all the way back up to Carmine Ave. Ninety-five. It's all contiguous. You have to cross Cocasset Street to get to it. You could walk from here all the way to ninety-five behind Carmine Ave. So, that's, it's a pretty huge piece. Over here to the, to the left lower corner, as you're looking at your drawing, that is the Bleachery, a portion of the Bleachery, which has been cut up into probably at least half a dozen parcels as we sit here. The site is, as you can see, I know it's hard to tell, but is surrounded by wetlands. We have the pond, of course. It's partially in a flood plain. These are all issues that we have to deal with, and we dealt with them back when we designed it for the commercial site. And we're very confident that we can do so again. The, we've taken some of the comments from the staff, and we've listened to them, and we really haven't developed any drawings. What I would call these, I call these cartoon-level drawings, because we haven't engineered them, but they give you a really good feel for what we want to do, what the density is gonna be, what the layout is going to be. So, what I'm gonna do now is turn it over to Jeremy, and he's going to discuss the project.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. Apparently, I'm a cartoonist.
A genius.
He's only, he's not a good engineer to me.
That's right. No, I'm an, I'm an architect with, with Union Studio. We're based in Providence, but we do work around the country. And so, we're really excited about working here in Foxborough, right around the corner from home. What you see here is what we're proposing for the site. Fifty-two units, combination of types. At the back of the site are a series of four-unit buildings. So, there's ten of them in total. So, there's forty units back tucked up against the conservation land. At the front of the site, we have five duplexes, so ten total units there. And then, we have the existing house here in the middle that we're going to retain and convert into a pair of units. So, fifty-two units overall. Site access is across the existing driveway and the existing bridge. There it goes. I should have to stand up anyways. Roadway comes in along the fronts of these duplex cottages by the existing home. And then, we have an internal loop here, so you get back in and around, back out. So, easy access, easy emergency egress, all that kind of stuff, pretty straightforward. And really, what we tried to do was structure the neighborhood as a series of sort of smaller clusters. And so, we have these series of small green spaces. These couple of buildings face onto this, as do these with a little shared amenity. Come down a little bit further, we actually included a little green space out on the ponds that any of the residents could come out and enjoy that view. And from Moore Street, you can still look back and see the existing house that's been here all along. Behind that, we have a larger green. So, these buildings all sort of front into that space. And then, further down, we have this little sort of sliver of one here at the end here as well. That includes the couple of homes here fronting out on their sidewalks and trails connecting all the way through. All of these connect out to the conservation land. So, the idea was to really take advantage of that as an amenity. I think the Concom folks were excited that it'd be folks that were sort of keeping an eye on it, utilizing it, having a little ownership over it. So, I think that's a great relationship there, really take advantage of that resource. So, if you can go to the next image, Bill. The next page, this is just an aerial perspective of what it can look like. So, again, orient you, coming across the bridge, these are the couple of duplexes out on the pond's edge. This is that little green space that looks out over the pond with the existing home here. You can start to get a sense of these little green spaces that are here and there, connecting back to the woods beyond. Next. And just quickly, because I know it's late, we don't need to go into detail in the architecture. But basically, the four-unit buildings are two-bedroom units. So, there's a unit, a two-bedroom unit on the ground floor. This gets mirrored, so there's a second two-bedroom there. And then, there's a set of stairs that go up and deliver you to a two-bedroom unit, again, on both sides. So, four total units, four total garages for those four total units. And these are, the ground floor ones are about fifteen hundred square feet heated. The upper units are about sixteen fifty. We go to the next. Give you a sense of what they might look like. So, in this case, the front elevation being the ones that front out onto those green spaces. So, we have a double-height porch, so that each unit has its own outdoor space looking out over that shared amenity space. So, this would actually be mirrored, and that would be your typical four-unit building. And then, you can get a sense of it from the side. You know, this nice bay, this gable. You'll see in a minute where we were trying to pick that up from. If you want to go to the next. Ten cottages in front are three-bedroom units. So, we have a primary bedroom on the ground floor, so single-level living. But you can go upstairs, two additional bedrooms plus a little loft space up there. They also each have a single-car garage. If you want to go to the next. And they are duplexes. So, again, this, this cottage would be mirrored over, and that'd be your typical little duplex in an elevation from the side. And then, last but not least, these are some images of the existing homes. This is gonna be retained and converted into a couple of units. And we hope to retain a lot of this landscape and gardening that's right around the front of it. That kind of feeds out to the pond. So, this was our inspiration, obviously, for the architecture we're proposing. So, we're trying to do something that's very contextual and will feel appropriate to Foxborough, and really picking up on the character of the existing home that's out there. And then, on the right, this is one of our projects in Concord called Riverwalk. This is a little cottage court. So, this gives you a sense of what the scale and the feel of those little greens is intended to be. So, the idea is that the cars and the parking are on sort of the backside of those units, and that this is really what the front sort of front on to. And this is the shared experience by the residents. And again, these are the, the couple we're proposing are all interconnected and feed you back out to the conservation land beyond as well. And I think the last sheet that is in there is just simply a section that's just required. It's typical wood frame construction. So, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We're not doing anything crazy. It's just what you would expect for residential construction in Foxborough. So, hopefully that wasn't too quick. Happy to take...
Can you come and do all our presentations?
And I think your drawings are very nice and not like a cartoon.
Thank you. I don't mind the cartoon.
So, do you have any idea what you're gonna do with Mr. Kelly's house? The, the old house? You're gonna convert that to two units, but do you have any idea what, how you're gonna do that?
No, no. We talked, you know, it's funny, we went back and forth about maybe making it a communal amenity, but it was almost too much square footage for a community building. So, we thought maybe we could, you know, we want to keep it. So, we said, "Let's repurpose it as two units." But we haven't gotten into floor plans or drawings or anything to see how that might, might work exactly. I should also mention, we're doing this as a 40B. So, that means twenty-five percent of the units will be affordable. So, it'll be thirteen of these units will be affordable. They're distributed, as you'd imagine, between the different types. So, some of the flats, some of the duplexes, and also a couple of accessible units as a result as well. So...
Why? Thank you. That was seriously, come and do all the presentations. Kevin, why did you ask the question that you did at the beginning?
Because traditionally, as someone who would do this, would just go through the 40B process on their own. They would not come to the town and ask them to partner with them in it. So, this is the first one that I can even remember where they've asked for a lip.
So, who is asking, like...
Mr. Seg and his presentation team are asking.
Well, maybe I, um...
Please, give a break, Bill.
Let me give you a little history of 40Bs in Foxborough and, and why this one...
First, you have to tell us who you are, sir.
Okay. My name's Bill Casbarra, former building commissioner here in Foxborough. And Michael couldn't be here tonight. And he asked me if I'd come here instead. So, I'm helping him through the zoning on this. And with that said, Foxborough, believe it or not, has had seven comprehensive permits. So, we are at our ten percent, which is required by law. So, we don't have to take anymore. We're at twelve and a half percent.
Twelve and a half percent, yeah.
By law, we do not have to take anymore. So, this one is so-called, what we so-call is a friendly permit, which means it's not so friendly. It's negotiated. We, we enter it with kind of a give-and-take with the applicant. We don't have to take it.
When you say "we"?
We don't, we don't have to...
We, the town.
We, the town.
Okay.
Okay. We don't have to take it because we've met the ten percent requirement. And believe it or not, we, we've had seven of these over the past years. We've had The Domain, The Lodge at Foxborough. Those are the two big ones. They were two hundred and fifty units. Recent ones were the one across from Stop and Shop, Community Way, Nadia Estates. We've had one on Cocasset, Housing Authority on Baker Street that I can think of, a couple others, so come to mind. But we're at twelve and a half percent. Those went directly to the Zoning Board of Appeals because they're the permit-granting authority. We have to approve them because we didn't have, we weren't at ten percent. And what that means is, they, if we denied them, there's an appeal process. It goes to Mass Housing for the appeal. And under, if there was, only under very extraordinary circumstances would the appeal stand. Now, if this one was appealed, well, it couldn't be appealed. That, that's what that means because we met the ten percent. There's no appeal process. So, this one's different because it goes through what's called a lip, a, a local initiative program. And it's different because it goes to the selectmen first, which is this process. It's called a partnership, which is, which is really a misnomer. It's, partnership sounds like it's a business deal, but it's not. It just means that they, it goes, is the application goes to the selectmen to see if the town will be, will support it. That's why it's in front of the different boards and commissions. And they, the selectmen send it to, to the different boards. They've sat down for, to look and review it, to see if, for their comments, recommendations, and then they'll collect them. And then, the board will say, "Okay, this is something that the, the town can support." And then, they will either approve or approve the application, and it'll go to Mass Housing. They'll look and see and make sure that, okay, you know, the applicant has the, the financial backing. And they'll approve it. And then, it comes back to the town... Then it comes back to the town at that point and then the applicant will take that and then go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Then it goes to the real meat and potatoes. And the zoning board at that point will go back through this process to the different town, to the different boards and they'll ask you to really look at the plans. Because what you're looking at now is conceptual, what Jeremy's done. At this point, you're, the applicant's going to give more detailed plans of what this is going to be. So it may be a little bit more different, more detailed. At that point, the planning board will be looking at better plans, along with conservation, water department, whatnot. That may be at that point a six-month process to go, to go through the permits. And the zoning board at that point will require traffic plans at that point, environmental impacts, the real meat and potatoes. And that will be, and then the permit gets conditioned, that's when the real negotiations begins. And that's the comprehensive permit process. And then a permit may or may not be issued. I say "may or not," "may or may not" because it can be denied. This is, we've met the 10%.
Right, right.
So that's the difference between what this LIP is and what...
So the LIP is done because we've already met the 10%?
No, it's, it is a more comfortable way for them to make the application.
I believe it also has benefits for the financing down the road.
Yeah, I think you're right about that.
It changes the, it, they're more limited on financing, going the old, the conventional route.
And if they go without support.
By being able to go through LIP, it changes the subsidy and it gives a lot more options and therefore, a little more financial freedom. And to note, 40Bs are always restricted to profit. So while you might go, oh, well, that just means the developer ends with more money, it's restricted. But it might allow the opportunity for more mitigation or more creativity if there's more funding flexibility.
This is a...
There's no actual partnership with the town.
No.
No, the town does not...
Negotiated permit. Now, now the applicant has to negotiate with the zoning board and the town, where in the past, you didn't have that negotiation.
It's more adversarial.
Exactly.
Yeah. If we were under the 10%, we, it was like, by right, that we just spent two hours discussing.
Well, for example, we always talk, and Bill knows this, I was early in my days, but that project that everyone talks about across from Stop &amp; Shop, that zoning board did an exhaustive job and did try to reduce the number of units on that project. We sat through meetings with consultants and basically, if a project, if it, if a, if you're going to cut a unit and they're able to show that it creates an uneconomic condition when you're under 10%, that's one of those things that you, you can't do. So the Board of Appeals literally had their hands tied. They had to approve those eight units. We are out of that circumstance.
Great example.
That was the last time that we were under the gun and now the board holds the control, the town holds the control, not the, not the developer.
Amazingly, they sold like hot takes.
Does that kind of help?
That helps a lot.
Thank you, Bill.
You seem, you seem to be negative about it.
Not at all. I just, I said it was a rhetorical question. I know the answer. I wanted Bill to tell everybody what it really was.
Bill, what's the advantage of the development? Why are they going with this 40B concept rather than just an open space development?
I'm sorry, Gary.
What's the advantage of the applicant?
Why do 40B and not just an open space development?
To do the 40B, not just an open space, because of the density.
Because zoning wouldn't allow it. Zoning, that's a general industrial out there which doesn't allow residential. So, yes, we, they would request and in the packet exemptions to zoning to allow this to happen. So 40B is an override of, you request the exemptions and that's in that package.
And if I can address that, since I've been involved in the conversation on housing forever and a day.
No, really?
Um...
She hates housing.
I know.
Yeah, we do have, we do have an overview here that kind of gives an idea of like what the difference is. So we always do standard 40Bs. That's what we're all used to. But for the selectmen, this was provided, so the, the selectmen are being asked to support the proposed development and in this respect, the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday night or whenever, we don't think they'll vote Tuesday night, but if, you know, when they come time to vote on this, the questions they're looking at is not, like Bill refers to as the meat potatoes. It's very, what is it, the 20,000-foot-up view. Does the proposed development meet the needs of the town for a diversified housing stock? I.e., is there a need for the type of housing that is proposed and affordable housing? Two, is the proposed development an appropriate residential use of the site on which the lot is to be, on which the site is to be developed? Three, is the conceptual design of the proposed development appropriate for the site, taking into account the aspects of the site itself, the location of the site, the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding environment? And lastly, does the proposed development present issues regarding public health and safety, traffic, open space concerns, the environment and its impact on the surrounding areas of the site? So that's kind of the very general thing that's sort of being expected that the Board of Selectmen would be concerned about. And then, as you said, when it goes to the zoning board is when it would be really dug into. To Gary's point about, Bill's right that it's general industrial, but if this were residential, let's just say, the reason why this is being done is that most of Foxborough is R40. That means one-acre zoning. So we've all seen how this goes, one acre in the town of Foxborough. I mean, you see what Joe Lynch is going through to get one developable lot. We're looking at $250,000 to $300,000 per acre. So one of those lots out there is, and so we learned through all this process that basically, your lot is traditionally about one-third the cost of a development. So if you have a developer building a house on a $300,000 lot, they're not going to throw up a 1,200-square-foot cottage. You know, they're going to have to maximize the development potential, throw up a 3,000-square-foot house, get $700,000 to $900,000 for the sale price, walk away and try to find another one. So this is really the only way. You know, through our conversation on housing, we've been hearing this desire for smaller homes, for especially this type, you know, Domain and Lodge, you know, that's 500 units. They're all rental. They're all on our inventory. They all give us that count, but they're not really affordable. We all know that. And they don't really meet the needs of Foxborough residents. What we've heard from residents is this desire to go into some smaller homes that are ownership, that aren't necessarily apartments, that are communities, that are neighborhoods. So that's why this is being contemplated and, you know, is there a need for this type in the community and does it work here? And then, again, the zoning board will get into the actual development specifics.
So, you know, in your, in your planner's report thing that was dated yesterday, you know, you have a bunch of different areas that you were addressing in here and so if the board said, yes, let's go ahead and tell the, tell, tell the, tell the Board of Selectmen that they should go forward, at what point do they address some of the things that you have questions on in here? Is that at the ZBA? Is that, you know, is that before it gets to the ZBA?
I don't think they actually would.
Well, no, the Selectmen wouldn't. But I'm just saying, you know, at what point do these, do these things get addressed?
Well, we've been advised that it's best to address this at the zoning level. Like, we think that the Selectmen certainly could caveat any support with some conditions, you know, sort of saying, we would suggest X, Y, or Z, you know, things that are important to them. But again, at this level, it's really hard to get into detail. But I think things like, you know, water line improvements, things like that, I certainly think there could be general statements from the Selectmen saying, you know, we would trust the Board of Appeals would address this concern of the water department, you know, things like that. So it wouldn't get definitely worked out until it gets to the zoning board, but I think the, the Board of Selectmen could certainly weigh in on some of their concerns if they, you know, I think they really need to do what they're going to do and they might find that what they want, you know, the developers, and then they have the opportunity of doing this on their own.
So if there was an argument to be made for less total units or more, more affordable units or, you know, whatever those things might be, you know, in the plan, that ZBA is where those arguments should be at?
Well, I mean, we actually, I had a, I have a debate on that. I don't, I think, well, I guess it depends, because I don't know whether the Board of Appeal, whether the Board of Selectmen, if that's like one of their hot issues, you know, I mean, I guess that's the question, is if they feel like, well, I'm not going to support this project unless there's way more affordable units than 13. Well, then I feel like that would rise to the top because I think they wouldn't support it unless it changed. That said, I don't know that this is the time. It's hard to know.
I'm not, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I just looked through the document, there were certain things that were sort of flagged out there, like, should we be doing this? Should we be doing that? And I'm just trying to understand in this process where those items would fall, where those conversations would happen, not...
I certainly think they could happen at the Board of Selectmen level, but I think they're going to have the teeth at the Board of Appeals. And I think it's, I think this is all part of a continued conversation and I anticipate Tuesday night is when the Board of Selectmen will really dig into it, because the last meeting, they really, it was the first time they were seeing it.
Just the presentation, yeah.
So I think Tuesday night will be interesting to see what they're issuing, because this stuff might rise to the top and it might become that those are the issues and it might be insurmountable, you know, if they feel strongly about one thing or another. And that might be the deciding factor. Or if they're just, if they're general, then, you know, we'll just go from there. But I think it's kind of going to be interesting to see where the Selectmen are interested. But I think they're going to be looking for you because you have experience with reviewing sites and land development, you know, I think the Selectmen are a little nervous in their respect because they don't review projects. So this is a little outside of their normal...
I think they can broad-brush it at this level.
Okay.
You know, we just...
Not reviewing anything.
We recommend more affordables. They'll have the opportunity at the zoning board level to weigh in again with more detail and then that becomes a negotiation. It's, it's going to be a six-month, at least a six-month process during the zoning boards in which that becomes a negotiation point. And yes, it can be denied at that level. So there's certainly more clout at that level.
So the Selectmen could negotiate for their support right now if they wanted to.
They won't have the opportunity to negotiate. It's not, the zoning board does.
Why can't the Selectmen?
Well, they can, they'll have their recommendation. They'll have the ability to recommend on their application.
They, they can wheel and deal with you as, you know, for our support, this is what we're going to insist on. Like, wouldn't they?
I don't, I don't know, Gary.
It's not their game though, Gary.
It's not their game.
They don't understand any of that.
No, but if they had some input, they could. Well, they have a right to negotiate.
Right. But at this point, unless I'm mistaken, at this point, the, the Selectmen's recommendation is merely to go to the state for an application.
To the state.
No, but I, I just want to clarify, because I had a little words with Bill on it. I agree with Gary, because I feel like the board is not going to support something unless they're comfortable with it. So whatever it takes to get to that point, you're just not going to get their sign up. So if the Selectmen aren't comfortable with it, then they just have to go to the state with, on their own and then there'll be no Selectmen thing. So I do think there's going to be, I mean, if...
There's some room there.
If the Selectmen feel strong, like I think that's what the question is. I don't know that they have a strong position one way or another on some of this, but yeah...
Because there's no knowledge.
You know, but if they put the line in the sand and said, we are not going to support this project unless the sidewalk is built to the school, that could be a sticking point. And now, again, we, we won't know the answer to that, but I, that's the hard thing is, you know, it's, it's almost like the Selectmen might not be willing to do something without something. So I don't know that we know that answer yet.
This is so high level.
How that would be played.
Are they asking us at a high level if we're supportive of this?
I guess, I guess the questions I would ask.
They're asking for your input. That's what, they're asking for your input.
At this point, we don't have enough time for that.
I don't think we have enough time to give input.
There is no input at this time.
No.
Well, look at the back of my, see my memo?
Yeah.
Planner's report. Look on the back page, I found like this was a good summary, is, will the project, one, create housing opportunities for a range of community needs, to be located on a site that there is available infrastructure, use environmentally responsible design, incorporate landscape treatments. So I feel like this is kind of a good checklist, checklist on a broad level. Maybe, you know, the planning board, I feel like you could, and I don't know how you feel about this, but is there a need for varied housing in town? Do you guys agree there is or there isn't? You know, do you believe, do you feel that this checklist is somewhat being addressed? And, I mean, you can also write your letter very generally, saying that we realize this is conceptual, but, you know, our planner has been stuck in a conversation on housing for three years and has certainly documented a desire by some residents for this stuff.
Where did this list come from?
Me.
From the page, Brian.
Because it feels like it was created for us to answer yes to it all.
She wants housing.
I know, I know.
I don't want unabated housing. I don't want to, you know, certainly, I want housing choice for the residents.
And you know my stand on as well. I've been involved in it.
Yeah, you've been involved in it too. But I want to be clear, I'm not just looking to increase housing willy-nilly. This is like a specific...
There's a unique opportunity with this site because of its very particulars that...
Conceptually, I think this is a good idea.
Conceptually, I think it's a good idea, but we, there's no detail here to...
No.
I mean, I think...
No, the detail's going to come with the ZBA.
But what good things do you like?
Jeff's turn.
So I would just say that, you know, this kind of goes back to, you remember when Selectmen were permitting the beer garden? They wanted our input because we don't know any of that stuff, you know, right? Remember, hold on.
No, I get that, I get that.
But in that situation, we were working from an actual application and set of plans.
Right.
This isn't like that. So, in my opinion, what we're going to say is, yeah, we think this is a good idea, let's pursue it. What else are you going to say at this point?
Well, that's kind of where math.
Right.
That's what I said, conceptually, it's a good idea.
Conceptually, it's a good idea.
It's got to unfold.
And I think going beyond that would probably be inappropriate at this time.
Right, because we don't know anything.
You don't have enough information.
Yeah. Well, I think you could say blanket statements, like you wouldn't want any onerous foster responsibilities for the town, you know, things like that. You think, you mean...
I would hope that they could figure that out for themselves.
No, I know, but I mean...
Well, are you going to get a better bite of the apple down, down the road?
Yes.
There will be negotiations.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually...
There'll be more detailed information.
Exactly.
I mean, based on what has been shared with us, which is very limited.
You can only say that because you sat on this board before you sat on that board.
Conceptually, I think it's a, like, it's a good idea. I can't, I can't say anything, I could list 20 million things that I'm like, yeah.
Well, a lot of people look at it and say it's way too dense.
No.
Some people may, and that's why I asked the question. I mean, what would you have that conversation? Should there be fewer units? Should there be more affordable units? There, there may be a lot of things that once we see a more detailed plan, that you, that you start to flesh it out.
Conceptually, I think it's fine.
And some things you really love and some things you say, yeah, too much, you gotta...
Like, I'll tell you, I'm going to, I'm going to, if it continues to unfold, that sidewalk, that will be me. I will be like, we need, we need to fix that sidewalk. There's a school there, there could be kids working.
You're going to have an opportunity to do site visits.
Right. So, but I think conceptually, based on...
I don't think we have the paper to go to Mansfield.
We'll just stop right at the Mansfield-Foxborough line? Is that what you would like?
Exactly. They're not going to maintain our sidewalk.
Oh, I agree. I have no problem. But conceptually, based on what we know today, I, I think it's a very viable project.
Here, here. Would you make that in form of a motion?
Make a motion that our feedback to the Board of Selectmen regarding the Moore Street project is that, based on the information that was presented to this evening, which is incredibly high level, we think it's a viable...
Conceptual idea.
Idea. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that one.
Thank you.
Something about the, what about the conceptual idea?
Viable conceptual idea.
I just appreciate you not saying cartoon.
We do have a sketch, an engineer and a cartoonist.
And we thank the Disney studio. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay.
I'm not agreeing with that.
Okay. You're entitled.
I tried to get him to leave. He was...
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.